...to order now. And first on the list this evening, we have the 145 King of Pressure Road, the Biomed Track. Demolition of the existing office, research structure and redevelopment of the property with proposed office buildings and associated parking. I'm assuming the applicant's here?
Yes, we are. I guess the last time we were before you on this matter was probably October, I think. And at that, since that time, we have provided some clarification. There's a lot of issues raised by both you and by the Board of Commissioners, so we've provided some clarification as to those issues. First, I'll have Mike Devine come up, and then we'll have Ross actually talk about the design itself.
Nick, I just want to enter my appearance. I'm Mark Kaplan, and I represent the adjoining property owner, Brandywine. I don't want to just be part of the public that makes just a comment. We want to be a party to the proceeding, so thank you.
Okay.
And also present on behalf of Brandywine is George Kretchulak, who's my co-counsel, no matter. Biomed, excuse me.
Nope, still your client, doesn't it?
Good evening. My name is Mike Devine, and I represent Biomed Realty. We're the owner of 145 King of Pressure Road. I've been a resident in this area for 50 years, so I know Radnor Township well and the surrounding area. We appreciate the opportunity to be, to present our current plan for Radnor Park located at 145 King of Pressure Road. Our goal continues to be to turn a now obsolete eyesore, which some call the big green monster, into a beautiful Class A corporate campus that will make all of us, all the township residents and planning commission proud. As you know, Biomed is a best-in-class national real estate company. We are publicly listed on the New York Stock Exchange. We currently own over 17 million square feet all over the country and UK, Cambridge, UK. Some of those markets that we're in are Cambridge, Massachusetts. We run the Science Center down in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. We're in Palo Alto, California, San Francisco, San Diego, Seattle, Princeton, New Jersey, and our corporate offices in San Diego. We have a strong track record all over the country in designing corporate environments that provide a sense of place and belonging to its occupiers, inspire innovation, and invite collaboration. We specifically focus on the life science industry. When finished, this new campus will attract high-quality tenants that Radnor's used to and who, like Biomed, will be long-term good neighbors in this community. Radnor Park will attract more of the best and brightest to Radnor Township, which is the goal. In addition, Radnor Park will bring real economic benefit to the community, including over 750 construction jobs, $1.2 million net annually to the school district, $400,000 net annually to the township, and untold revenues to area businesses, stores and shops. We would like to, again, we're here tonight to, as Nick said, clarify some of the questions that you had before and show you some of the tweaks to the plan. Keep in mind that this is a zoning-compliant plan of an ordinance that's been in existence for 45 years, at least, in your town. Thanks again. I appreciate the opportunity, and I'd like to call Ross Cole, our architect and planner up.
Good evening. I'm Ross Cole, I'm with BAM Architecture Studio, and we are working with Biomed on the layout for the site. So I'd like to call your attention to the screens to run through a presentation that we've prepared for you tonight. What I'd like to be able to show you this evening are basically summarized in four areas. One is a brief visit of the existing site conditions, so you can see what some of the challenges are that we're currently dealing with and that green monster that Mike had mentioned a moment ago. And then we're going to show you what the vision is for the Radnor Park campus. And I emphasize the word "campus" because part of what we're trying to do here is create something that is a pedestrian-friendly environment, then walk you through the analysis of how we looked at the zoning to be able to create what we're showing you. And then lastly, John Witchner will join me to talk about the transportation aspects of the site. So with that, the first thing that you'll see up on the screen is the existing site conditions. There are a few things to note about this site that I think are unique to it. One of them is the view that you see in the upper left-hand corner. There is transit that is literally on the corner of the site. There's also a bus stop that is at the other corner of the site by King of Pressure Road. And then there's a third transit stop that is less than a quarter-mile away from the site itself. We think this is important because one of the things that we are really trying to focus on with the design is the ability to make it something that would be a transportation-friendly environment, and I'll explain a little bit more of that in a second. The problem with the site right now is many things. One is the site looks terribly industrial, which I do not think is what reflects Radnor as an environment, nor is it something that I think that Radnor is looking to see as the future for this town. The other is there's a sea of asphalt. So as is typical for a lot of buildings in the area, this site is surrounded by a tremendous amount of asphalt, and you can see that in some of these images, as well as the sense that it's fortress-looking. And because of that, it's not a very pedestrian-friendly environment. We think that pedestrian aspects of things is extremely important, and it's also aging. It's not something as a site right now that would be able to attract the type of tenant that we believe Radnor represents as a town, basically a Class A tenant, a best-in-class type of environment. So there are a lot of things about it that we think are ripe for change. The site itself, we think, is really a wonderful site that's just been terribly neglected over the years. We've been before the board before, and one of the things that we've done is we've clarified the atrium and the building connections. There were some comments that we had gotten last time we were here in front of you. And additionally, we've incorporated the CICD visible offset approach. There were some discussions at the last meeting about what was meant in the code by a 90-degree offset. So to be able to answer the question in a way that we think is consistent with what the town has agreed to recently in the past is we've tried to adopt the same type of approach, and we'll explain that in just a second. We've also, with some of these things, reduced the square footage of the building slightly. And then we've also added detail to the parking flow to be able to represent some things and explain to you how we've really thought through the circulation, the columns, which is basically how everything is structured, the stairs, the elevators, and so on. So with that, I'll walk you through a little bit of what we've got. The first is a view of King of Pressure Road. This is looking up the road as you travel from Route 30. And the first thing that we're trying to do with the site is make it a much friendlier-looking site than what you've seen in the past. To be able to attract the type of tenant that I referenced a moment ago, a Class A tenant, a very forward-looking company, the building itself needs to represent some of those same features. So it needs to look like it's thinking about tomorrow with its technology, with the type of materials that are used. And so that's what we're representing here with some of the glass, while at the same time making sure to have the placement of the buildings and the way that we treat the landscaping around it. Be friendly to the environment, be representative of what's existing right now in terms of that buffer between King of Pressure Road and the buildings themselves, and primarily to really have it be something that is a respectful neighbor for the environment. This is a view that is in the southeast corner of the site as you approach it. So this is almost looking in the rear area of the site as you're coming up around the road that curves around on the southern portion of the site. And one of the things that I'd like to draw your attention to first is how we've worked very diligently with the civil engineers to try and minimize the amount of asphalt. And that includes even with the roadways that we have in this immediate area where you're seeing, which is the drop-off section to these buildings that are at the south. You can see that the intent is to add some sculpture to even with the materials that we're proposing to use for the surface itself, is to use some things more creative than just simply asphalt. And so you can see with this, we're trying to be much more representative of something that is pedestrian-friendly, encourages people to walk rather than drive where possible, and most importantly, makes it a very friendly environment to walk up to. Another feature that we think is equally important is when you look at the space between the buildings. And when it comes to those spaces between the buildings, we think there's a tremendous opportunity there. We could easily take a space like this, and we could pave it, and we could put in parallel parking spaces, which we think would totally defeat the purpose of what, or the opportunity of what we're trying to create, which is this campus-like environment. So between these buildings, what we are proposing to do is introduce grass, introduce sculpture, introduce seating areas for people to be able to gather and perhaps even have meetings outdoors as well as indoors, and basically be able to join these buildings together as a campus as opposed to stem simply being buildings that are separated by parking spaces and sidewalks. And the last image that I have to show you here before I get into a little bit of the analysis is a view of what we refer to as the pedestrian main street. This is something that we're proposing would be able to have some playful areas to it, like for instance, you're seeing here a bocce court, some sculpture, seating areas again, very carefully thought-out vegetation. This is something that Biomed has been doing at other campuses around the country. This is quickly becoming, becoming considered a best practices approach to creating campus environments. It's something that we've done on projects in other parts of the country, and it's really worked wonderfully successfully. I juxtapose that again with the idea that if this were simply a roadway with some sidewalks on it, it would have a completely different appeal to it. So we think that that space between the buildings is as important as the buildings themselves when laying out the plan for this environment. One last image that I should mention is on the north of the campus. I'll get to the plan in just a minute, and I mentioned the south approach. This is actually the north approach, which is by that SEPTA train station. And again, we're trying to introduce elements that make the environment much more conducive for people to walk, particularly with that location of the bus stop, which would be to the right of this image that you're looking at, and the train station, that would be to the left of the image of what, that you're looking at here. Keeping the idea of transparency with the buildings, making the buildings feel like they're really something that's speaking to the future as opposed to something that is, might be considered outdated or might be considered trendy too quickly. So with that, I'd like to go through some of the analysis that we've done. And this image that you're seeing on the screen, the image on the left is a satellite photo, and our site is actually this area right over here. And if you go to the middle image, all that we've done in this, going from the image on the left to the image in the middle, is we've simply taken away a lot of the noise. And what I mean by noise is we've shown the roads, and we've shown the footprints of the existing buildings on the, in the area around where the site is. The gray represents the PLO district over here, and then the other buildings are just buildings that we think are representative of the neighborhood that we're in. Over here on the right, the only change with this is the footprints of the existing buildings with that 2009 plan compared to the footprints of the proposed buildings over here. We started with this in some of our initial analysis because one of the things that we were looking for was to determine whether or not we felt that the building shapes and sizes were in keeping with what we see in the neighborhood. Now, I'm not talking about the zoning district. I'm talking about the neighborhood itself, because when any of us walk down the streets, we're not necessarily thinking about where it might switch from a PLO to a PB district. So they're all seen as cohesive. What I, I mention that because one of the things that we think is important, whoops, sorry about that, lost my cursor for a second, is if you look at these buildings that we're proposing, they're not terribly different in size or shape than the buildings that exist. They're different in terms of the way the structure is laid out.
When you say "exist," you mean the 2009 approval that was never built?
The 2009 approval, which only affects this part right here.
Okay.
So this little piece right here is a little bit bigger than the footprints. This is the large green building that we've talked about. This is the administrative building that you can see very clearly from King of Pressure Road. So even that distance, difference between the two is rather subtle.
Those are existing, those last two are existing buildings?
That's correct. This section right here is existing, this is existing, and this, about half of it, is existing as a footprint of a building. We mention that because if you look at some of these other buildings, this is the building just up the road over here, this is Radnor Financial over here, and you look at the footprints of those buildings relative to our buildings that we're proposing to do over here, they're very much in keeping with what's at Radnor Corporate Center over here. They're actually much more modest-looking in terms of their footprint than what is directly across the street or when you go over towards the hotel and Route 30 over in this area. To us, the signal that that says is that what's being proposed here really is not out of scale with the neighborhood. And we think that's an important place to start from the perspective of the environment itself. So the next thing we did was we drilled down into the site, and this drawing is simply showing an analysis taken from the zoning code of our site, the setback for parking, which is shown in gray, and then the setback and the height limitation for the, what can be built on the site shown in that orange color. It's showing up a little bit more red in this image that I'm looking up, up on the screen. And so, working with that, you can see this is the area where we can build. And what we did was we started carving that out. And this is where things like that pedestrian main street and that space between the buildings that we think is so important. So when we've created some of these, when we've created this pedestrian main street, when we've created these gathering points, we've done that very intelligent, very deliberately and very, in what we think is a very intelligent way, to be able to make these environments that allow people to have views, vistas between the buildings. So as a, for instance, we're showing an atrium space over here that is intentionally aligned with the, this opening in over here, so that you have these various nodes that people can focus on as they're walking through and enjoy the views throughout. If we had lined all the buildings up, you'd have a much different type of feel to it. And we think that's very important in terms of maintaining this campus feel and particularly the pedestrian feel about it. So this now is a plan of what I just showed you in ad hoc symmetric form. And the thing that we found most interesting about that is a couple of things. And actually, before I go into that, I just want to point out a few things to you. This is what we see as the primary entrance into the site, which is the south entrance. Coming up over here, wrapping around, there's an entrance to a parking, subsurface parking area below here, and then another entrance, that subsurface parking area below over here. This is that southern entrance point that I mentioned to you, that's in the southeast portion of the site. Then coming back around this way, this is where we have some of our loading areas over here, so that's all well tucked away from street view. Then over here is where we have our north entrance point, and this is where I mentioned that interest in really trying to make this something that is very much transit-friendly. There's a bus stop that's down in this corner over here. There's the transit stop that's over in this corner over here. And so we've tried to really organize this plan in a way that really starts to pick up on some of those things and makes this whole connection something that we would be proud of and that we think that the site will find as a huge asset. So with that, what I'd like to show you is a couple of things that we also investigated. This plan that you're seeing on the right is an analysis that the town had requested be done by an independent planner, and you can see that they came up with several standalone buildings that are connected. And they came up with a square footage that was not dissimilar from the square footage that we have. They've got the parking and the circulation that happens in a very similar way to what we were showing. What we've got over here now is this grouping of four groups, one, two, oops, sorry, two, three, and four, and we have connections. Now, those connections, you'll see that no more than three of those groups of buildings are connected to one another, and wherever the buildings are not connected, we've got at least 45 feet separation between the buildings. And in several cases, we actually have greater than 45 feet separation between the buildings. Another thing that I'd like to also note is when you look at this analysis over here, you'll see a couple of things. This is basically taking that last plan and stripping away the parking and the other things, just so you can see the buildings themselves. Here's that one group, second group, third group, fourth group. And what we were trying to be able to clarify for you here is that here we have building 1A, 1B, 1C, they are connected the way that the zoning code allows for them to be. Again, no more than three connected over here, similarly as we go around over here. Now, the second thing that we did, which I'll, which you can see a little bit of here in the lower-left corner, is a blow-up then of this first building. So this is the building that you saw a moment ago in blue. And this is where we have those same niches that I talked about that talk about the 90-degree offset that's in the zoning code. So these are six feet by 24 feet, which our understanding is that that is the same as the CICD of what was accepted as an approach to represent something that had a 90-degree offset to it. And we've tried to incorporate that same type of thinking into what we're showing here.
Excuse me. On, this is the sheet that was marked A101. What was the scale on that, on that sheet, because it wasn't listed?
I do not know off the top of my head. I'll have to check that for you. I don't want to, I don't want to say what I think it is and tell you I'm wrong. I'd rather get you a right answer. Now, to focus on that, that space between the buildings a bit further, we prepared this rendering to give you a sense of how some of that might exist. The, this space, that is the space between the buildings, which by the way, is accounted for as part of the 160-foot dimension. I don't know if I mentioned that earlier, but the maximum dimension of any single building within the town is, under the PLO district, is 160 feet. So what we've made sure of is that the building length includes at least one of these atrium spaces, so that there's no argument about that. You can see this niche that we've created in here, which is that six-by-24 setback over here. You can see that we've got a couple of bridge connections inside the building, and then we've created this plaza area over here. We've gone to great, great lengths to make this space feel like it's actually something that blends with the exterior. If we were in a climate that was 70 degrees year-round, we'd probably just leave it wide open and not even bother covering it. But given the climate that we live in here, we thought it was appropriate to turn this into something that could really serve as a gathering space for people, just like those exterior spaces that I talked about that are between the buildings, so that they could be used year-round in over here. The next thing I'd like to bring your attention to and walk you through is the parking itself. And we've made some very deliberate moves with the parking because we want, we really want to avoid this sense of, of a sea of asphalt with the environment. And that includes a whole variety of things. We've got four locations here. You can see them in these, what are, are orange-colored arrows on my screen, on the large screen, they look a little bit more muted. But there's two locations here. There's one here at this lower level of parking, one that is at the next level up, and then two locations over here and over here that you're seeing, this being the four buildings that I showed you just a moment ago. This drawing is simply a drawing that was done by Tim Haas, which is our experts in parking. Tim Haas is an architectural firm that focuses on parking structures. They stay up late at night trying to figure out how to make things flow as smoothly as possible. And this diagram, which I will admit even I find a little bit confusing to read, we're showing to you so that you can see that there was a lot of thought put into how all of this actually flows, the number of entrances and exits out, in and out of the space to make sure that everything was going to work adequately. And Tim Haas has, from their years of experience, felt very confident in this plan that was developed. What I'd like to really draw your attention to is the fact that we've thought through a great deal of aspects to this that make sure that it is properly aligned with the buildings up above. Among them, the yellow boxes that you're seeing there are the stairs, so those are all the vertical connections that have to continue from the building through to the parking structure, the orange vertical elements, which are the elevators that also would need to align. And then finally, even the column spacing has been worked out to make sure that whatever happens up above is properly coordinated with what happens down below. And then I mentioned a few minutes ago about that circulation. So we've really thought through this. This isn't just a conceptual idea of how this would work. This is really a plan that has been thoroughly worked through to be able to figure out how it could be feasible to create this. That was one level. This is the, the level below, and so you can see here, very similar situation. And the reason why we were showing you both plans was simply to be able to make the point that we've really thought this through. This isn't simply a back-of-the-napkin type of concept idea, but something that we think is really thought through in a way that is important for being presented to you here. What we're trying to avoid is something like this. You know, this is obviously the building that's up around the corner, Radnor Financial, and it's a sea of asphalt parking. And I mentioned those spaces between the buildings, I mentioned the amount of parking that we've got, even at the front entrance to the building, where we've dedicated that to a very gracious turning area, so that you have more of a plaza-like feel to it as opposed to loading it up with parking spaces. Because what we're trying to do is avoid that sea of asphalt, like you're seeing in this particular environment, and like you see in many other buildings around the area. So with that, what I just want to be able to give you a checklist on from a zoning perspective is this slide that we put together. Obviously, the site itself is not less than 10 acres, which complies with the PLO. The buildings are no more than 30% of the site area. The landscaping is at least 45% of the site area, and there is a buffer with that landscaping between the street and where the buildings start. The buildings themselves are 150 feet from the front yard. They're at least 200 feet from the side and the rear yard of the site. And the surface parking is at least 75 feet away from the street to where the parking begins. The building size, as I mentioned earlier, none of the buildings exceed 160 feet, even if you include that, those connections that we're proposing between the three buildings to connect them. No more than three buildings are connected, as stated in the code, and the, they are visibly offset from one another at 90 degrees, and because that's such an ambiguous thing in the code, we followed the CICD to be able to make that something consistent with what the town has acknowledged in the past on completely separate projects. And lastly, that the group of buildings is no, is no less than 45 feet in separation. As I mentioned, we've got several instances where we're proposing to actually be greater than 45 feet in separation. Lastly, the height obviously is 38 feet, which is the code maximum that we're allowed. So these, these are all the things that are driving the, the massing for what you're seeing on the screen. And with that, what I'd like to do is ask John to come up and talk a little bit about transportation.
John Witchner with McMahon Associates. Presented in front of the planning commission before, and I think what I, we wanted to come back with, with was a few subtle changes to some of the numbers that we presented in the past based upon some coordination with township staff and some changes to the site plan. The site plan that's before us here is very similar to a previous plan that Ross had shown, with the exception of some additional information on the southern end of the site as well as the northern end of the site. The access and the improvements and the way the site is laid out, a lot of it was based upon where we see traffic coming to the site and leaving this site. Approximately 75% of the traffic we've seen based upon existing traffic trends in this area want to go to and from the south in this, down to Route 30, whether it's that that's east and west on Route 30, or eventually making it to the Blue Route. In addition, from the existing trends and existing counts, we're looking at approximately 25% heading north of this site. And that starts to, really start to define where we are looking for, for the most appropriate access points along King of Pressure Road. The southern driveway where we feel approximately 75% of the traffic will be entering and exiting this site, we're looking at that as our main access. Right now, it is an unsignalized driveway, one lane entering, one lane exiting, and we're looking to increase the width of that driveway to have one ingress lane, maintain one ingress lane into the driveway, and then as you exit the driveway, bring my cursor up here, have three lanes exiting the driveway, two left-turn lanes and a right-turn lane. That's, that, based upon our traffic impact study, is proposed to be signaledized to appropriately let vehicles enter and exit the driveway. We don't want to have a situation where vehicles feel as though they're having We don't want to have a situation where vehicles feel as though they're having a hard time getting out of the site, and then they start to enter into King of Prussia Road, trying to jump into a gap of traffic that may not be there. We want to, we want to safely get them into the site and safely get them out of the site. At the northern driveway, it's, it is shared with the, with the Norristown High Speed Line access toward the back. And again, approximately 25% of the traffic we see heading north from this site. We're looking at one ingress lane and two egress lanes, two exiting lanes, one left-turn lane and one right-turn lane, whereas there's one egress, one ingress, sorry, egress lane today. In addition, at this driveway, we're also looking at a right-turn lane into the site along the site frontage. That's really, it's also in the area of the bus stop in that area, can be used as a, as a bus pull-off area, if necessary, based upon utilization for that, for that bus route. Along King of Prussia Road, as we know, there's a three-lane cross-section along King of Prussia Road today. One lane in each direction, and what it basically amounts to is a, is a two-way center-left turn lane for left turns on either, for driveways on either side of the road. Based upon the code requirements, the code requires, King of Prussia Road, the code requires King of Prussia Road to be widened to a 48-foot-wide cross-section. So as you see on this plan, there's two lanes in each direction along King of Prussia Road, along the site frontage. And that really ties into some of the existing widening that is seen on King of Prussia Road closer to Lancaster area, Lancaster Avenue. It basically kind of picks up on that widening and continues that widening along the entire site frontage. It's important to note that the existing curb line along the high school property is proposed to be maintained where it is today. So all widening would be performed on the site side, on the, on the eastern side of King of Prussia Road into the proposed development.
Question?
Yes?
What's the difference from the south side entrance/exit, where you're going to have two left-hand turn lanes, to Route 30?
It's approximately 500 feet. Sticking along King of Prussia Road, the intersection with the high school, Raider Road, currently, obviously, that's not signalized today. One of the things that, that the applicant is looking to do is propose a traffic signal at that location for safety of ingress and egress for students to the high school. We've seen some poor levels of service for exiting vehicles at that driveway in existing conditions. We felt as though a traffic signal would be a safe way to, to let those vehicles exit onto King of Prussia Road. Going into the next slide, we've talked a lot about numbers, about trips, about transit, about comparisons with other plans. This information is updated from what we've discussed toward the end of 2014. We've really started to boil down the square footage of the proposed plan, the 2009 approved plan, and a transit capture, a transit utilization. As was mentioned before, since I've stood here toward the end of 2014, the site, the square footage of the site has been reduced, has been reduced to approximately 533,000 square feet, as compared to the 475,000 square feet of office and lab space in the 2009 approved plan. Our first step certainly is to take a look at industry standards. The Institute of Transportation Engineers designates statistics and data on what a, what an office building, an office campus would generate on a per-thousand-square-foot basis. Using some of those statistics, we have this ITE column, as shown in this, in this column right here, for both the morning peak hour and the afternoon peak hour. Comparing that to the 2009 approved plan, knowing that a portion of that plan was office and a portion of that plan was laboratory space. We took a look at the data and statistics published by ITE for both land uses at specific square footages as part of that 2009 approved plan. The ITE would, would suggest that in a typical suburban area with no transit utilization, no transit opportunities, the ITE suggests that it generates a certain number of trips. This site, as we, as we continue to talk about, does have a great opportunity for transit usage and transit utilization. It is adjacent to the Norristown High Speed Line in the northeast portion of the property. It is in close proximity to the Radnor Station along the Paoli, Paoli Train, Paoli Regional Rail Line for SEPTA. It is adjacent to a bus line that runs along King of Prussia Road. I've been before you many times talking about various studies nationally, talking about a 15% transit utilization or transit capture, studies that show upwards of 30-plus percent utilization of transit for a site in a transit-oriented development such as this. We have gone back and forth with township staff on the studies we've seen, the opportunities that we've seen at this particular site. What we've received feedback from Gilmore about was their opinion or their feeling that a 7% transit utilization is appropriate for this, this particular site in lieu of the 15%, upwards of 30% that we've seen in national standards. I think the 7% transit utilization is modest. I think it's going to be higher with that, than that. At the same time, I'm a realist, and I understand that moving forward, we've kind of need to take our cues from Gilmore in terms of what they would allow for a transit utilization. Biomed wants that transit utilization to be much higher than that. But from a planning perspective, Gilmore has kind of directed us to use up to a 7% transit reduction to basically mean that now 93% of the, of the trips for this particular site are then placed on the roadway, giving us higher volumes to, to try to mitigate in that regard. When we take a look at a comparison between the proposed campus at 533,000 square feet versus the 2009 approved plan, it really, it starts to show that this is not unsimilar or dissimilar to the 2009 approved plan. 65 additional trips in the morning peak hour as compared to the 2009 plan, and 55 additional trips in the, in the afternoon peak hour as compared to the 2009 plan. As we talked about in the previous slides, 75% of those trips down to, to the, to the Lancaster Avenue quarter, east and west, to the Blue Route, and then 25% to the north. So really, to the south, to Route 30, less than one car per minute as a result of the proposed campus in comparison to the 2009 plan. And to the north, less than a third of a car per minute as compared to the 2009 plan. And it really continues to go on to show that for 65 additional trips in the morning and 55 additional trips to the 2009 plan, there is a litany of improvements along the King of Prussia Road quarter with additional through lanes, with additional traffic signals that were not seen or not realized with the approvals of the 2009 plan. So lastly, we, we wanted to discuss the, that, that the two proposed signals along King of Prussia Road, at the southern driveway and Raider Road can coexist. The technology is there to synchronize those particular traffic signals to each other, as well as to systems along Lancaster Avenue, Radnor Chester Road, up through King of Prussia Road, where they can coexist and manage the traffic flow along King of Prussia Road. We feel as though the proposed signal at Raider Road will improve the safety for vehicles entering, exiting the high school along King of Prussia Road. We feel as though the signal system along King of Prussia Road, the two signals and tying it together with other signal systems that exist along Route 30, as well as to the north on King of Prussia Road, all that can operate safely and efficiently from a level of service perspective and a queue perspective along King of Prussia Road. So again, all of these improvements, the, the two proposed traffic signals, the widening of King of Prussia Road, deceleration lane into the northern driveway, safety improvements at the high school, they're all realized, in my opinion, with the proposed plan that were not seen to the 2009 approved plan with that, with that small increase in traffic that was shown in the previous slide. Do you want to open it up to any questions that the, that the Planning Commission may have of the team?
Were you able to find that scale?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I haven't, I didn't look at it during the presentation, but I will find it for you.
Thank you.
I have a question on parking. What sort of tenants do we anticipate having in these buildings?
I, I would defer to Mike to answer that question, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong. But the intent of the tenant type is going to be a, what I would describe as an IBM-type tenant, so to give, put names around them. A DuPont, but not a DuPont industrial, but DuPont office space type of tenant, something of that nature is, is really what's intended for the site. There could be other uses, could be a medical office building, for instance.
That's what concerns me, the medical office building.
Okay.
I'll tell you why. Because in the other medical office buildings that are around, and I've seen this in Bryn Mawr, it's a very difficult problem there. They never allow enough, or I should say, they never require enough parking for medical office buildings. Because you might see the doctor five minutes, but you're sitting in the office for an hour, and various patients stack up. So you need many more parking spots, I think, than what you might require normally or at present time we, we require for a medical office building, where you might not necessarily have that problem with an IBM-type, DuPont-type of person. And then I was just glancing at your parking, but there didn't seem to be a lot of so-called visitor parking. And if it's a medical office building, are you going to be able to handle all the patients on the outside level? Or is there going to be a dedicated area on one of the levels down below for them?
Well, there's two things I'd like to answer that question with. The first is that, if you look at Biomed, the owner, historically, they have not typically done a medical office building. So the more likely scenario is going to be an office tenant, like a DuPont or an IBM or something of that nature. That's just more in their, their keeping.
Sure. Yeah, I think the, the campus is designed for a corporate tenant to be drawn to, to that location. It's a gateway location for Radnor, and we feel that there's an advantage there for the millennials that these companies are trying to attract due to transit there. So we have the R5, the R100, the bus station, and the trends that corporate, large corporations that would come to this site, they're chasing the millennials, and, and these millennials are doing reverse commutes from the city. They'd rather live in the city, have a cell phone and computer, rather than a car. And it's a huge recruiting tool for a corporate tenant to be at this location and hire the best and brightest coming out of college or from other companies. So that's really where we're focused.
Well, there are some other medical buildings in this area here, and there's parking difficulties in those situations, too. I would rather see what you've just described in a medical office building. But let's say you have a medical office building, or say one of those six buildings is a medical office building, or a proportionately that amount. How are you going to handle the parking for that, for visitors?
Well, I, it's hypothetical question, but...
Well, this whole plan's hypothetical, quite truthfully.
Well, I don't agree, but that's fine.
We're assuming that you're going to have this type of tenant, but it's hypothetical.
Well, I mean, the majority of the commercial district in Radnor is not medical office, it's Class A office users. So I would say there's more of a chance of a Class A office user than a medical office user.
Yeah, just to interject two things. One is, I, I, it's hard to imagine how all of this campus would be a medical office piece of it. So I think only a small portion of the campus would. The other is, which is the second point I was going to make, is that what makes this campus special is the transit-oriented aspect to it. I just had lunch today with somebody whose, who, whose son lives in Center City, Philadelphia, and does a reverse commute out to this area, and talking about how much of a trend there it was. And that had nothing to do with this meeting tonight. That was just something that came up in conversation when I asked him how his kids were and what they were up to. To, that's the point of, I think, what makes this site so special. So if we were to say, yeah, that we're going to basically give this away to be medical office, I think you'd be missing, Biomed would be missing the thing that would make this so attractive to the kind of Class A tenant that I think Radnor would appreciate having, such as a DuPont or something like that. Because those people are in the business of trying to attract the best and brightest in today's competitive world. A campus like this is perfect for them because there is such a trend in that direction. To turn it into an all-medical-office campus would completely be throwing that opportunity away. You might as well take this campus and put it over where Radnor Corporate is, where it's, it's isolated from all that transit. That's nothing against Radnor Corporate, it's just that the whole advantage that this campus has to get people on the transit and off of the cars just gets thrown away by not being able to do that. And that would most likely happen in a corporate environment. That's also in keeping with what Biomed does. I don't, I don't think Biomed, as a, as a main company, owns even any medical office building.
I, I think, let's, let's table this for later, but the fact of the matter is, it is owned for medical office, so we do need to take that into account, and, you know, so.
I think if that was the case, we'd have to address the parking issue.
Okay. The other question we had, as I recall at one of our previous meetings, was whether or not underground parking was allowed when there is not sufficient space on the, the surface itself.
Kathy, we have a memo on our desk about that.
We do?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's, what's the length of the frontage on King of Prussia Road?
And what's the answer?
I have a question. What's the length of the frontage?
The overall frontage? You mean from end to end of the entire site?
The calculation...
Oh, oh, the length of the site.
The length of the frontage on King of Prussia Road?
I would defer to Alex for the exact dimension on that. That's a civil, it's a civil question.
Super. And if you could pull up the picture, the, one of the early sketches didn't show, you didn't show the traffic signal at the southern entrances, that...
Oh, you mean the rendering?
Correct.
The rendering did not have the, the, the traffic.
Was that intentional? Are you no longer putting the light in? Because I know that that's a discussion.
No. There was really, that, that rendering was done before we had finalized the discussion about really what was the best place for, for the traffic signal, so.
Okay.
As part of the process, I'm sure that'll be updated.
All right. So yes, I am looking for the length of the frontage, the King of Prussia Road frontage calculation. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board in the meantime? Clarification-type questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
Just as an estimate.
Go ahead.
It's around 1,000 to 1,100 feet. I'd have to get an exact number for you, but it's in the range of 1,000 feet.
How much?
1,000.
Well, it's relevant with regard to the zoning, so that's why I'm asking.
Right. Well, I mean, what, what zoning question is, is it?
Has to do with 80% of the, not exceeding 80% of the building length on the frontage.
Right.
I forget the exact number, but yes.
Okay. I mean, we can provide that calculation.
I, I have, I have a, I have just a real quick clarification for me. You may have gone over this before. I, I guess I'm kind of concerned with my question about how far it was for the jet, was it Mike?
Charlie.
I think it's on. Yeah. My question about the 500 feet, the distance, you're saying that 75% of those cars, the 560, whatever that number was, making left-hand turns. How, how would they stack with, to the light on Route 30? I mean, what's, what's the potential congestion there? And again, that may have been discussed before I got here.
No, I, I think that's a good question. On King of Prussia Road today, in the southbound direction as you approach Route 30, there are some level of service issues and some queuing issues that backs up as you head southbound. One of the things that, that we saw in proposing a traffic signal at the southern driveway was that, in conjunction with that, we felt as though we had recommended to the applicant that in order to put that traffic signal in at the southern driveway, there would be another improvement that would need to be done down at King of Prussia Road and Route 30. That improvement that we've identified is a second southbound right-turn lane from King of Prussia Road onto Route 30. And what that does, it starts to shorten up the queue heading southbound on Route 30, so it does not block the southern driveway. So really, those two improvements kind of go hand in hand. If, as I kind of advised the applicant on, to support the traffic signal at the southern driveway, we felt as though the second southbound right-turn lane from King of Prussia Road onto Route 30 would need to go hand in hand with that traffic signal. That, that then brings the queuing and the stacking away from the southern driveway and does not block the driveway.
So you may be able to help with this one. How much of the school traffic comes out on the King of Prussia Road? Most of it goes the other way, doesn't it?
No. You, you mean in the morning?
I'm, I'm more concerned at night, when they, when people are leaving.
You know, the majority of the traffic in the evening is probably out onto Radnor Chester Road, because it's related to the sports events.
Right.
Unless there's an event at the school. And there's, you know, traffic improvements that will be occurring on Raider Road in the back, onto Radnor Chester Road this summer. But there's significant traffic in the morning coming out. Don't, you know, it stacks there.
That's really the only place that I worry about, is you have all that traffic, and you really only have those two. And 75% is coming from the south. I mean, that's 75% of 600 vehicles is...
And that was, and one of the reasons why, you know, we're bringing that main access, or that southern access, south of the high school driveways, that we did not want to mix the traffic associated with the office complex, the office campus, with the high school traffic. So if we can get them onto King of Pressure Road, and get them down to Route 30 as quickly as possible, they don't, they start to not mix with the high school traffic. To answer your other question about traffic coming out of the high school, in what I'll call the afternoon peak hour, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., which is really the peak hour of the office building, about 108 vehicles, in today's conditions, make a right out from Raider Road to head southbound on King of Pressure Road. That's from 4:00 to 6:00. I imagine it's certainly a little bit higher from, say, 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., which is certainly not the peak hour of the office building. But just to give you some of those numbers that you're looking for.
Thank you.
The current intersection, when King of Pressure Road runs into Lancaster, there are two left-turn lanes there, and one right-hand turn lane, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. There are two southbound left-turn lanes, and one southbound right-turn lane.
How are you going to widen that? I mean, is there the space there to widen that, without encroaching on the town, at the school district property, or...
We, we're developing a concept plan, as requested by the Township Traffic Consultant. There would be some physical widening in that area. Based upon our preliminary investigation, there's no impact to fields or their property. I think that most of the right-of-way, if not all the right-of-way, is available in that area. There are some slopes there that we would have to just relocate some of the walls that are, retaining walls that are in that area. But that would be a physical improvement. You wouldn't just re-stripe that approach, it would be a physical improvement. Some signal equipment would need to be relocated, and that, those are some of the things that the applicant is looking into in response to a recent comment from Gilmore.
There's something like, close to 2,000 parking spaces under there, isn't that right? Like 1,900 or something? Is I, did I read that right?
Yes.
Okay. What percentage of those do you think are going to be coming from longer distances, like the Blue, North Blue Root South? And what's that going to do to the intersections there? Have any, I mean, you may not know off the top of your head, or off, God.
The, let me look at some specific numbers here. We're looking at approximately 20, in the morning peak hour, approximately 25% of the traffic would come from Route 476 northbound, get off the northbound ramp, and travel across the intersection onto King of Pressure Road. About 20% would come southbound on 476, come around the, around the ramp to Lancaster Avenue, and then make their way over to, over to King of Pressure Road. So all in all, about 40, 45% would come regionally off of 476. Different peak hours, we see slightly different trends, but, and then east and west on Lancaster Avenue, anywhere from 20% to the east, approximately, anywhere between 15 and 30% from the west, depending upon different peak hours. But, yeah, there's about a 45% draw, based upon existing traffic trends that we've seen from a regional perspective on 476.
So somebody coming southbound's going to have to curl around, get off the exit there, and come into the T-exit, the entrance of where the ramp comes into Route 30, and then turn right, and then stack there, and then turn left to go into the site.
That is correct. There are currently two left-turn lanes from Lancaster Avenue onto northbound King of Pressure Road. And with the improvement that I had discussed before about the additional geometric improvements along southbound King of Pressure Road, that lets us then start to optimize the green time, the signal timings for that intersection, and maybe take some time away from King of Pressure Road, because we've now improved it geometrically, and now we can maybe reallocate some of that green time to an approach like the left-turn lane from Lancaster onto King of Pressure Road, and things of that nature. There's also certainly some other things that Gilmore asks us to take a look at, at that intersection, but I think from the, from the planned perspective, the code requirements are centered around access, centered around King of Pressure Road. The widening of King of Pressure Road from a three-lane cross-section to a four-lane cross-section, and the levels of service at the different access points creates a code-compliant plan with no requirements for off-site intersections. So, you know, we're here, we're presenting a code-compliant plan, and the other intersection improvements are for discussion for the purposes of the traffic signal, the southern driveway. Under the, under the MPC, the code-compliant plan and the township cannot require these off-site improvements.
But we still have to, thank you. I suspect that this question isn't really for you, but an issue that Kathy brought up, that we probably should revisit right now. One interpretation of the underground parking and surface parking is that, and I'm sure you guys have seen the memo, so...
I was going to say, this, the code obviously left some questions open. So we actually conferred with Nick and with George to have them opine on it, so.
I guess we can talk about it now.
And I'm not going to go through the whole legal argument again. It's been briefed, there's been memos back and forth between George, myself, Mark, George Brosman, and of course, the solicitors have also opined on it. So I'm not going to go through the whole legal argument. All I want to say about the underground parking is, at best, at worst, it's ambiguous. This was not raised until Susan raised it back in October.
Susan raised it a long time ago initially, and it only got traction in October.
Okay. Because, I don't know, did you raise it prior to this plan?
Yes.
Okay.
It doesn't matter. I mean, it's her job.
What I'm trying to get at is, this particular aspect of the ordinance was in effect since 1993. Since that time, we had an approved plan in 2009 that had structured parking. We had a, we had Brandywine's own depiction of a buy-ride plan that has structured parking. We had the zoning officer opine that a 475,000-square-foot plan that you saw in 2009 has structured parking. We had Delaware County Planning Commission review a sketch plan and mentioned nothing about structured parking not being permitted. We had township review letters of that sketch plan, not saying anything about structured parking not being permitted. We had Ritu's analysis with structured parking in the plan, saying that it's permitted. We had Delaware County Planning Commission review of this plan that mentioned nothing about structured parking. We had township staff review of this plan, as well as Ritu, mentioning nothing about structured parking. The point I'm getting at is, worst-case scenario, it is subject to interpretation, it is ambiguous, it is vague. Case law is very clear in zoning, this black letter, that if an ordinance is vague and ambiguous, you must have the least restriction to the landowner, and you must determine in favor the landowner. And that's the only reason I bring up all these past approvals of this type of plan. Again, it's been briefed, it's been memoed, the solicitor has opined on it. Worst-case scenario, in our opinion, it's ambiguous and vague.
Nick, please, please stay. I have a question for you.
Oh, go ahead. Well, that was, I didn't know if we were going to ask Nick questions, or go to staff, however you want to do it.
Well, I want to understand exactly what Nick's trying to accomplish tonight, then, because there's a bunch of other, there's like 20 other items in here, which are, you know, mostly nickel-dime items, but need, will comply type things, you need to do them. So I'm just trying to understand, what is your goal tonight?
There was legal this evening? Well, we want, you mean, as a board as a whole, or my, as a board as a whole, we want you to approve the plan, obviously, or recommend approval of the plan. Your job, obviously, is either recommend approval, or recommend denial here this evening. I didn't want to get into a long discussion of the legal issues, because as I mentioned, the solicitors now have opined on it.
I don't think we're going to, because quite frankly, it's going to be, well, we'll discuss it as a board, but if we've got a solicitor who we retain, that has an opinion, that's going to weigh extremely heavily on this board. And if he's wrong, he's wrong, but then you have other remedies.
I understand. And that's why I didn't want to go into a whole...
No, no, that's fair, I agree. So can you just, so there's 20 other items here, which are will comply?
I don't think, yeah, as far as, I believe that we basically would, the only issues, my understanding, and I'll ask some of the, some of our experts...
Because you have all three letters from our consultants.
Right, and, right, we do. And I know there was an issue regarding the traffic signalization in the southern traffic light, and Alex, I'm going to look at you, I don't believe there's really that many more issues as far as engineered comments, but I'll defer to Alex on that.
I'm most interested in the ones that you disagree with, or don't feel you should comply with.
Yeah, I mean, the main concerns are what Nick spoke about, and also, we're requesting the waiver for the sidewalk along the frontage. Along the frontage of King of Pressure Road.
Can you explain though, Alex, why, on the sidewalk?
Yeah. It was noted in the letter, I think, the current plan, and there's a question as to whether or not a waiver is actually required. We don't actually believe we need to request a waiver. The classification of this roadway says sidewalks and curbs required upon the recommendation of PennDOT. This isn't a PennDOT road, it's a major collector that's not a PennDOT road, so it's a unique situation in the township. At least this portion of King of Pressure Road isn't PennDOT. So we don't believe there's an express requirement for sidewalk to be proposed, but the consultants have asked for it. We believe the property as set up provides all the necessary pedestrian circulation that is needed for the users of this property, and the nature of this property lends itself to not really have regional pedestrian traffic. To the south of our site is wetlands and a waterway, and PennDOT right-of-way with a PennDOT basin. So there's no opportunity to connect any sidewalk to Route 30 to the south. And to the north, there's already a sidewalk, and on the west side of the roadway, there's already a sidewalk. At every traffic signal installation, PennDOT will require crosswalks and ramps. So what we've proposed is connections through our site, through this pedestrian main street that Ross spoke about. We've provided a trail, excuse me, a trail to get users of our campus to the R100 line. We've expanded the bus shelter, because we all know that this area is incredibly lacking for any users of the bus, it's just a dirt patch that sits there today. There's already a walkway along the Septa driveway that takes the bus users from King of Pressure Road back to Route 30. All our users can get there, and then all our users can also come through the site and head north to the R5. So there's very limited benefit to the sidewalk, there's no opportunity to connect it to 30, so it, in that sense, it's a sidewalk to nowhere, and our users can already get wherever they need to go. And we've worked with the Shade Tree Commission, there's a handful, we believe, five very mature oak trees that create a very nice streetscape along here, they're 30 to 36 inches in size. Without the sidewalk, we're able to preserve those, with the sidewalk, they'd have to come out. So we're requesting a waiver to save the trees for the ability to preserve those, instead of building a sidewalk that serves little to no benefit.
I might point out, down around, the curve underneath the Blue Root on the other side there, that's currently under redevelopment, but there are going to be some restaurants and so forth in there. I could certainly...
In what area?
On the other side of the Blue Root at Lancaster Avenue. It's currently under construction, there was something there that they demolished. I certainly could see somebody coming out on a Route 100 trolley, coming down there, walking down across the thing, along the, if we, if the township were to put a sidewalk along the edge of that wetlands or something, and then go under there and go to work. I don't see why that would not be a perfectly reasonable thing for somebody to do, especially if it's a, you know, like, a waitress, or a server, or something in a restaurant like that.
Yeah, I mean, this, this area to the south of our site would be, we believe it'd be pretty difficult to get a sidewalk in. There's an existing stream that crosses under the road here with the culvert, and there's very limited area left to get a sidewalk over top of that culvert.
Are you still, you had originally, in a previous plan, talked about connecting underneath where that pathway is right now, and improving that as an access point to get to that part of Lancaster Avenue. Is that part of your plan now, or not?
It's not currently on the plan. I know there's comments about, that's shown, I believe, on the Greenways Trail, and the applicant's willing to discuss that with the board, but it's not part of the plan today.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just comment on Doug's question? That scenario that you just brought up about taking the train and walking to those restaurants, there's actually a path on the other side of the train tracks that people do that now, and it's, it's actually almost the size of a driveway. So they literally take the train, get off on the other side, and walk all the way down to those new, what will be restaurants, and I think an office building, down there. So there is a way for them to access that now.
How do they get across Blue Root?
It just, it runs, it literally runs along the train line and takes you underneath the Blue Root, right to the back of the parking lot, of that, of, what's that restaurant that's in the back? That's Z. Yeah, so it does that now.
I'll have to go check it out.
So, just so I'm clear, Nick, again, you're in agreement, or will comply, with all of our comments, with the exception of the sidewalk waiver, and I think there was a second one with the traffic...
There was one regarding what standards, the ITE, we should use, and I think both Amy and John both agree that it should be the current one, instead of the one that was several years old. And I think there is a waiver required for that, too.
Okay.
In addition to the, as Nick had mentioned, the location of the traffic signal at the southern driveway, that was one that we felt as though we've shown in the traffic impact study with improvements, in conjunction with improvements at Route 30 and King of Pressure Road, we felt as though a signal can coexist between the southern driveway, Raider Road, and not provide queuing issues along King of Pressure Road due to the additional improvements that we were previously discussing.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, just to be clear on, I guess, all the will complies, you're asking for any issues in the letters that aren't, aren't straightforward will complies. So I think there'll be some, a little bit more information there, if you want to get into the specifics of kind of the ones that aren't, just blanket will comply comments. We're still working on this intersection with Amy and Gilmore. This isn't a 90-degree intersection. There's some, I guess, some Saldo standards, whereas this road doesn't intersect at a 90-degree angle. We believe since there's limited parking back here, it's not needed to be, because you can just kind of have a stop control, and people can continue straight through that intersection without it having to be realigned to a 90-degree, and relocating Septa easement lines for limited benefit. We've provided additional, I think, some revised striping, but the comment still stands. So that's still an issue we're working through with, with her. There was a request for additional sidewalk on the south side of this roadway. Once again, we think it's unnecessary, since there's already sidewalk to the train station on, there's an existing asphalt trail through Radnor Rackets property. You know, that's something, that's a new comment that wasn't in the first letter. We haven't had an opportunity to discuss it with her. And then there, and I might defer to John slightly on this, Amy also has a comment about independent, dedicated left turns and right turns into this intersection. What we're proposing is the four-lane section, so our left turn is a shared straight and left turn movement, not a dedicated left turn. So the code requires a four-foot section. I believe she's discussing the possibility of a five-foot section, that's not what we're proposing, we're proposing the 48 feet, which is four feet, which would be a southbound straight lane, and then the center, the second lane, would be straight and a left turn into the site. And we've previously discussed the possibility, there was a request for a right-turn lane here, but similarly, it's off-site, and the wetlands and the culvert, once again, restrict the ability to build that right-turn lane.
What would be helpful for us is if you could, it seems like a lot of issues that you need, still need to negotiate, so if you could get these negotiated, and then just come to us with the items that, you know, you can't negotiate and you need a waiver on, I would prefer not to spend the all-night kind of negotiating back and forth between you and Amy. I mean, we have other, we're not done yet, but I just think that'd be more efficient use of everyone's time.
Yeah, I believe the issue, and I'll defer to Nick, but I believe there's not enough time in the clock for, for an additional meeting.
You know, and Steve, we were just talking, and... You know, and Steve, we were talking, and, and at this point, I don't think we have a problem with conditioning on those comments, and then we'll just work through them.
Yeah, that's fine, too. You get my point, right?
Right, sure.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, now I'd like to hear from Brandywine, then I'd like to hear from the public, and then I'd like to go to staff and board comments.
Mark Kaplan, on behalf of Brandywine, oh.
Can I have just that one back, Steve? And then I'll go to the, I apologize.
You've heard me say it any number of times. Brandywine is not here because of competition. Brandywine is here because we are concerned that this is such a good location that to overload the traffic would kill the goose that lays the golden egg, both for Brandywine and for the township. So our concern is the overdevelopment of this site because of the traffic that the overdevelopment will cause. So I asked Steve to leave this drawing, the quote zoning compliant plan on the board to demonstrate something to you. And it has to do with the allowable underground parking. And if you.
Yeah, we prefer to take our.
Well, no, I, I'd like to, I'd like to use it.
This is our presentation.
Excuse me, can I use this?
If it says, if it says, if it is graphic, it's his graphic. You have to bring your own.
But I, I need to see his plan. He's presenting a plan.
I don't know.
Get out of my way, Mike. Come on, come on.
Just, just let him, let him take his materials with him, and then.
That's fine.
Do you, do you need the computer? You, you, did you get enough what you need? Okay, go ahead, Mark.
So the plan that you just saw, or the plan that Skip has in front of him, or that you all have in front of you, and I'll put up here in a minute, shows a maxing out of the site. What do I mean by a maxing out of the site? Number one, the, the plan that's presented requires 45% open space, or green space, I should say. That plan that we have says that it's 45.1% green space. So there's no additional space to put any parking, any more parking on there. Number two, those parking spaces extend all the way to the 75-foot setback. So that plan is maxed out, and I'll get to what's important about that in a minute. Well, I will get to it now. The provision that Susan has referred to and that John Rice opined on was addressed in my February 3rd letter to John, and I want to make sure that everybody has a copy. Well, it's not that big. What, what this addresses is the issue of can you max out this site? Can you put 537,000 square feet and 1,958 parking spaces on this property by taking the parking that is needed to create that amount of density and putting it underground? John Rice said no. I've put the provision that is referred to on page two, accessory parking uses, I'm sorry, accessory uses are permitted in the PLO district, and those accessory uses may include, number five, a parking structure when constructed as an accessory structure. Now, I'm going to stop. I haven't finished reading that. But if you put a period there, Mr. Kudjulik and Nick would be right. You could put these additional 1,500 parking spaces below grade, but that's not what the ordinance says. It says a parking structure when constructed as an accessory structure for the purpose of eliminating allowable surface parking. John Rice has opined that you can't do what is being, what is being done here, which is to create another 1,500 parking spaces so that Biomed can create an additional amount of square footage that I really don't know, but I think it's over 200,000 square feet. And what's the result of that? The result of that is exactly what you heard John Witchner use whatever adjective you want, warn you about, threaten you about, inform you about. And what John Witchner said was that the plan that they have with 1,958 parking spaces is a code compliant plan, and therefore, and he said it, under the MPC, you cannot require any off, off-site parking improvements. I heard it, you heard it. I think it was said very nicely by Mr. Witchner, but it was, you're not getting any additional off-site parking space, I'm sorry, off-site traffic improvements under this quote compliant plan? Well, we don't think the plan is code compliant, and we're not going to nitpick the other items. This letter was written in response to the statements that have been made repeatedly by Nick, that, oh, this is ambiguous. This section of the code is ambiguous. And I start out by saying, and you know why? You know it's ambiguous? Because Brandywine had an approval subject to this code section, and look, it's got structured parking. Well, that turned out to be completely false, and you didn't hear Nick say it again today because we went back into the records and we found that the provision that presently exists was amended after Brandywine created the structured parking. We don't have to be too clairvoyant to connect those dots. Would seem to me that our predecessor, whether it was Radnor or whoever it was, went and used the accessory provision, built a structured parking, and the Board of Commissioners at that time didn't like it, so they changed the code to prevent exactly what's being done here. Jamming additional parking spaces underground so that you can get more square footage. Now, we have addressed in this letter and attached the exhibits to answer all of the statements that Nick has made and Mr. Kudjulik have made that says that, oh, that provision is ambiguous. And it's ambiguous because look at all this that's happened. We've addressed all of them. The provision is not ambiguous. It can only mean one thing, and please don't be intimidated into approving a plan that we believe jams just too much space onto this property. So I wanted to show you one thing that has really been ignored in the presentation. Steve, is it possible to bring that down so that this little chart can be seen? Oh, move it over.
Mr. Kaplan, before you start, could Sue Jones get a copy of what you provided to the planning commission before the end of the evening?
Who wants it?
For the record, for Sue Jones.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Okay.
Same one that you submitted last time?
Yeah.
Which date on it?
February the 3rd. So just so everybody understands the order of magnitude here. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Thank you, Steve.
You'll find it.
Yeah, it's working.
So just so we see in real numbers, the parking calculations are in the area I'm trying to show here. So we have 533,247,000 square feet. Somehow they, they used an 80% figure. I'll accept that for the minute. I don't agree with it, but I'll accept it for a minute. And then they, they determined what the parking requirement is, and they say that the parking requirement is 1,505 spaces. And they say that they're going to put 446 parking spaces on the surface. And then they're going to put 751 and 761 spaces. That is 1,500 spaces below grade. So if, and that's all so that they can max out that site the way it's been shown. So if you can't have 1,500 spaces below grade, then you can't have 533,000 square feet on the surface. So if this were done the way we think it would be done, some of the building space would be eliminated. It would be less than 533. There would be 446 parking spaces plus whatever additional surface spaces could be created where they took the buildings away. So the amount of allowable square footage is some significant number, or some number significantly less than 533. And we will go toe-to-toe with Biomed or anybody else and compete with the quality of Brandywine's product. But please don't allow Biomed to either jam all this additional space in or to threaten you with jamming it in and to further foul up the traffic problems, and then to come here and say to you, this is a code compliant plan, and you're not getting any off-site improvements. Thank you. Thank you. Are there any comments from the audience?
Rick Leonardi from 30 Aldwin Lane. I just have two quick observations. This is from Biomed Realty's own website, very first, very first click, biomedrealty.com. Biomed Realty Trust incorporates the leading provider of real estate solutions to the life science community. Going further, with over 17 million square feet of rentable space worldwide, Biomed Realty's world-class portfolio of facilities offers partners a wide range of options from traditional office space to small lab space to state-of-the-art build-to-suit life science properties. Kathy's point about this being doctors' offices is exactly right. This is what these guys specialize in. Don't, don't get misled here. Second point I'd like to, to indicate is, or to bring up is, is the architect indicated that he's using a provision of the CICD and incorporating it, doing us a favor, I guess, into his architectural plans. You may like that feature. It may be a good idea, but I think the idea of borrowing things from the CICD and using them elsewhere in the, in the township creates a very dangerous precedent. We start to cherry pick things from one ordinance and apply them to the other. It's not what the CICD was all about, and I hope, you know, if, if you like that, if you like that offset, if you like that 90-degree idea, great, adopt it, but don't make reference to it as, as a borrowing from the CICD. Thanks very much.
Any comments staff has in addition to the comments you've already provided with And there may not be, that's fine.
I do. I just wanted to remind the commissioners that the statement that Mr. Witchner made regarding no off-site improvements can be required for the MPC, it is up to Radnor Township to decide whether or not traffic signals can be provided or constructed at these locations. They have to be approved by the township. They're owned and maintained by the township. So please remember that, that that's something that you may want to consider.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, and just to follow on Amy's thought, if you do look at her review letter from Amy Kaminsky-Gilmore Associates, Roman numeral five, under the plan review, it was noted they did not support the proposed traffic signal at the intersection of King of Pressure Road and the southern access driveway. It goes on to give reasons why, more information regarding the signal from the southern locate, moving the signal from the southern, from the southern location to the northern location to provide a more regional benefit. So just in general, I concur with Amy and have concerns with the traffic as stated. And we did meet with Biomed some time ago on this one issue, and, and not much has, if anything, has really changed at all. But so that goes back to your comment where I think they need to sit down with us and try to work out something, you know, perhaps more global than what they're showing.
Okay, thanks, Steve. Steve, Stephen, after this memo has surfaced from John and Peter about regarding parking, do you feel that that is an item that has to be negotiated? Or at least confronted, let's put it that way?
I'll leave that up to our solicitors on the parking and the interpretation of that. That really falls, does not fall under my purview, but the traffic and what's going to happen, and as Amy said, the township owning, operating, and maintaining those signals, that's a direct effect to Radnor Township proper. But I'll leave it to the experts in their area to opine on the other issue.
Wouldn't that be a zoning issue? Wouldn't they need a variance in front of the board, Kevin?
Yes. Sorry.
Yeah, that's fine, Peter. Thanks, Peter. What I'd like to do now is, I'd like to discuss this among the board. I would really like to limit our, our discussion mostly to, I think, the items in, in Peter's letter. Most of these, there are these 20-some items that are mostly will comply or need to be negotiated. I'd like to not get into that at all. I'd like to, let's talk on the big items, and then if we can come up to some conclusion or resolution on that, well, we will tonight. And then whatever that is, they need to finish up with those, and then they can come back again if they're unfinished. Just for our discussion, I wanted to ask the applicant, just for the public's benefit and mine again, how many existing parking spaces are there, surface spaces, on the site right now? Oh, wait, I have a, Steve, I have a follow-up on that.
In the current plan, I believe it's 862, and then in the approved 2009 plan, it's 1,028.
So what happened in the approved plan that we've been talking about a lot tonight is that most of the structures were going to stay the way they are, which was structured for laboratory use as opposed to office use.
Well, only one of the buildings was lab.
That was the big building, though.
Yeah.
And so that we were increasing in that 2009 plan, the total square footage, however, it was going to be configured by 10%, 15%, 20%?
It was, the 2009 plan was, there's four buildings today. One was being demolished and rebuilt, slightly larger than it was originally, and then some parking expansion to support that new building. But the other three buildings would remain, were going to remain as they were. That was when J&amp;J was still a time.
It strikes me that that was probably non-conforming and that a lot of that, because how could you have 447,000 and only have 1,000 spaces and then go to 533 and suddenly have to have 1,500? So it seems to me that.
Because it was lab.
Right, because it was lab.
Because it was considered as lab.
Existing.
This goes to a whole nother item that, you know. This goes to a whole nother item that, you know, I guess Mark and I can argue over. But Alex had asked Kevin for a zoning opinion that if he built parking structures to accommodate that 475,000, could it be done? Kevin opined, yes, it could be done. Mark appealed to the zoning hearing board. The zoning hearing board said it wasn't right for decision. So really, and that has been appealed now to common pleas court. So that's just the status of where that is right now. I don't think I've misstated anything there.
So this parking issue is in court?
The parking issue on whether they can convert the 400, basically, the zoning board said it wasn't right for decision because no plan had been presented asking, no preliminary plan or land development plan had been presented to this board asking for any approval had been received for the parking structures to accommodate a development that was a gross 475,000 square feet of office. I mentioned Kevin opined, yes, it could be done. Brandywine appealed that.
Of course, we just heard from our solicitor that you need a variance. So that would be a difference.
Again, and I went through the whole, you know, argument as to why we feel that it is permitted, or at least at best, vague, or worst vague.
Peter, or maybe Stephen, I have a question. This 2009 plan that is continually referred to, has that plan approval expired? I mean, is it other than us wanting to be consistent, which we all think is kind of a nice thing? But why do we keep on hearing about a 2009 plan?
Well, they're grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in.
Well, they have five years which to build it. And plus, there's been an extension act that extends that five years. So, yeah, that plan is still viable.
That, okay. But point of clarification...
That came from the state, right? Didn't that come from the state that they said because of the economy they were going to, anything was extended for a certain time period?
Correct. Yeah, they actually passed it twice.
But point of clarification, only one building is being torn down in that 2009 plan.
I believe so. I'm not immensely familiar with it, but yes, I believe that's the case.
Well, that's planned, not before, anyway, so you don't have to worry about it.
Well, I was going, yeah. We don't have to keep talking about it. If he wanted to build that plan, that he would build that plan. So he must want to do something different. We can talk about this. Yes, so I raised several questions, I believe Friday, to the chair and vice chair and staff concerning this plan, some questions I had. The reason that I asked earlier about the scale on this sheet A101, and I'm still waiting to hear what the scale is, and the reason that I asked for the frontage along King of Prussia Road is that in addition to the zoning question that John Rice opined regarding my, pointing out about the parking structure, I'm not sure that this complies with 280, 64, I think it's D3, which is that the aggregate length of the buildings, yes, D3, in no case shall the width of the buildings or accessory structures or the aggregate width of buildings or accessory structures fronting on the street on the same lot exceed 80% of the width of a lot. That's the reason I was asking for the length on King of Prussia Road. And as I'm adding, and he said it's roughly 1,000, maybe 1,100, I'm coming up with somewhere in the range of 864 on just the front buildings. And that doesn't even include that there are some clips of the rear buildings. No, I think they should include the rear buildings because they all front on King of Prussia Road. They're all going to have a King of Prussia Road address. So depending on that particular, this is the big issue I raised on Friday to, and I want to hear from Peter and staff about this. But, you know, in my world, there is an argument to me made that all of the buildings front King of Prussia Road because they're all going to have a King of Prussia Road address, in which case there's no way the length of these doesn't exceed 80% of the lot width. But even if you only include the parts of the rear buildings that you can see from the road, which I was doing some little markings, I'm still not sure that that's the case. No, I don't know whether or not, and I want to hear from staff, Nick, not you. I know what you're...
I was going to say, we're not, I mean, we're not asking for relief on that. If it doesn't comply, it doesn't comply, the plan is non-compliant.
Right.
You know, so...
The other question about it is, as I looked at this sheet and I looked on the main plans, there's an inconsistent approach to the way that they're measuring and including the atriums. For instance, building, the unit building two, in that little unit, they're considering the atrium its own separate building. They're calling it Building 2B. But in Building Area 1, they're not, calling them their own separate buildings. And yet, they're measuring in some funky ways. The, in some cases, they're incorporating the length of the atrium into one of the building measurements. But they're applying that, they're not doing that consistently. And I suspect the reason they're not doing that consistently across the entire plan is that the building lengths will exceed 160 feet if they apply the same method across. Or there's more than three buildings in a unit because, as I said, in Building Section 2, they're calling the atrium its own building. And when I read the definition of a building, it has a roof, it has walls, it's staying on the ground, it's a building. In which case, Building Section 1 has five buildings if you count the atria as buildings, as does Building Area 4 have five buildings. But in fact, for those buildings, they incorporated the building length as part of the atria, but then they didn't do that on Building 2. In any event, lots of inconsistencies about how the measurements were done to adhere to the 160. These were the questions I raised Friday and I think are the big, you know, Steve, yes, I agree, there's lots of little items. There's enough big-ticket potential zoning issues, non-compliant things that we can focus on, and so those are my issues.
John?
The question that I have that has been of concern to me from the beginning is whether or not the square footage of the building, 533,000 square feet, is that based on owning 26 acres or 18-plus acres?
Now, it doesn't matter anymore. That whole, I think everyone agrees that the gross square footage counting 26 acres doesn't matter. I believe this is all based on 18 acres now. It doesn't matter now. So it's all based on the 18. We comply with the 18.
Doug?
My major concern is, again, the traffic issues coming around, the intersections and so forth, what they're going to have, so.
Yeah, okay. Let's go right down the line, if that's okay?
Well, I've already voiced my concerns, I think. I have that big issue with the parking. I think Peter is right.
My big issue is parking also, which drives the traffic, which goes to your issue. I think, first, I have to say, I think that the buildings are attractive, much more so than the last ones we've seen, we saw a while ago. However, I still think it's too much development on that. And I think proof of that is that the parking has to go underground. And I like the open space up top, but there's not enough room for them to fulfill the parking criteria on the surface without going underground. So I think the parking is the number one. That drives the whole building footprint on there and the amount of buildings they can have on there. But I do think they're more attractive than they were before.
John?
Yeah, being a new guy here, I guess I concur with everyone. I just think that it appears to be an overdevelopment, an iso-derdevement, but an overdevelopment. Again, my concerns are the traffic issues, especially the stacking at the end of the day, more so than the beginning of the day, coming in, making it left on the Lancaster Avenue. And again, that's all going to be driven because of the size of the project. I think you're going to have a very difficult time getting that variance from the zoning board. I think you're going to hit a roadblock there.
Okay. Nick, I'll ask it again. I mean, I think you've got a lot of unresolved issues. I don't know how you want, which direction you want to take the parking. Just bear with me a moment, please. I'm not so sure about the legality borrowing from the CICD, which we can ask about. But, so the question, are you still looking for a recommendation for tonight? I don't mind giving you one.
Yeah, we would like a recommendation tonight.
That's fine.
And just one comment about the CICD. We weren't borrowing from the CICD. I think the provision in the code, again, they use that nasty word, is vague. And that is why the CICD was written to specifically state what the offsets were going to be. And so we just used those offsets because, so it wasn't really borrowing from, and it was to have something more specific, you know, in it. There's a couple other comments made that I don't know how much we have to get into. I disagree with Mark's analysis of the 1993 plan from Radnor Corporate Center. That ordinance was pending at the time, and the plan indicates that. But again, you know, I don't think that's something for you guys to need to discuss right now. It was raised, and so I'm just bringing it up. And also, life science is not a doctor's office. Life science is similar, that you've heard Mike testify previously that most of life sciences now are in the Palo Alto and the Cambridge area.
Actually, no, it really doesn't matter, quite frankly.
It doesn't matter. I'm just saying it was raised, but we would like you to proceed, Steve, with a recommendation or a denial tonight. Thank you.
No, that's fine.
Steve, can staff, did staff have a chance to look at some of the issues that were raised that I mentioned last week?
See, Susan, yeah, I would like to just, instead of having a discussion about having staff try to go through the books and a lot of those are technical issues, I'd rather just have them contemplate those when they have the time. So I'd like to try and pass a broader motion, which would address some of the heavy concerns. Your concerns, they have to comply with those. So staff has, those are notes from us to staff. So, you know, we'll make a recommendation that if they comply with, I mean, so if we can make this recommendation, but they have to finish negotiating with staff and comply with everything with staff. The parking, I don't, I mean, I think that's pretty clear-cut. Now, this is the board, so in my opinion, that parking is clear-cut. The parking doesn't cut it. So we have to kind of decline the plan based on the parking. All the other items that have been discussed and need to be reviewed again by staff or negotiated with our traffic consultants. And I think that clears up most of them.
Well, the reason I mentioned the comments that I made is that two of them are additional zoning issues. That's the only, you know...
They may be. I mean, if... Yeah, but we did get a letter from our legal counsel that thought that they were okay. So I'm not saying your point's wrong, but staff will just have to review that again as well as legal. And if they think it's right, then we're just going to have to, I would assume we'd go down that road.
I meant the frontage issue.
I thought that was addressed by John's letter. Okay, so then we have to...
It'll be added to the list.
It'll be added to the list.
I really feel that the parking being underground is a major issue because if that's not allowed, it would drastically change the plan.
Well, that's the one that, no, that's the one that...
Maybe that's the one we need to vote on, or just, you know...
Well, no, I think we have to give them, look, they're coming here. They want to know what our opinion is. We're going to tell them what our opinion is and how to proceed.
Okay.
So do you want to start with a motion and... Well, I wanted to make a comment just before I did that. A little bit like the meeting we just had last week as the Villanova, the progress has been made on the plan in terms of a more intelligent design, less, you know, the, an attempt to be zoning compliant is a more attractive product. That being said, I agree with the comments on either side of me that if the parking issue is impossible, then this plan has to be reworked. And it's at a stage where it doesn't matter if there are 20 things that you agree with. You may not be able to do those things at all if you don't have the parking relief. And I don't know that you'll get the parking relief. I mean, I've rarely heard Peter be so succinct and clear on that. I do think it's a way to get the highest possible yield on the site, and I know that that's the economic objective. But I would make a motion that we actually either table it, and I wanted to invite a little discussion, either table it because this is such a critical issue, or if the issue can't be resolved, then we deny it.
My feeling is, this is such a big issue you just said, that if we, if they can't get over this hurdle and based on council's opinion, it doesn't, I think we have to be guided by council's opinion, then all the other issues become very subsidiary and perhaps not necessary at all because if they want to endeavor to come up with a plan that complies with the parking, they're going to have to do a lot of refiguring and redrawing and so on. So I think rather than engage in a lengthy debate over what else we should be talking about and what other guidance we should be giving, I would move that we recommend that the plan be rejected because of the parking issue.
Second.
Was that an actual motion?
Yes. Parenthetically, that gives them very clear guidance.
Yeah, if they're asking for a recommendation, I would concur with that one.
And then we call for a vote? Call for a vote?
The motion is to recommend rejection of the plan based on the failure to adhere to the parking requirements as outlined in council's letter or memorandum dated...
No, January 23rd.
Dated January 23rd, 2015.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Can we make amendment to that? Or should we, could we make an amendment to that?
If you, please, yes, please. Look, just tell me...
You don't have to vote until it's called for a question. And you can make amendments before a call to question.
I believe that's the way it works.
Just make your point.
I guess what I want to know, and you can correct me if I'm, like I said, I'm new here, are we saying that we don't agree? I think by saying your motion, we're kind of telling the board if it moves on to the zoning or the commissioners that we disagree with everything. And I don't think that's the feeling on this board. Because I think there's some really good things here. I think we need to say something to that effect that, you know, we believe it's a good plan, but we're having a hang-up on the parking issue, and the parking issue must be resolved before we can do this. I think that's a better...
But the plan may change dramatically if they, so to speak, follow the recommendation. I mean, I think, I understand what you're trying to do, but I also think it's going to make it just way too complex.
Plus, John's motion was that we reject it because of the parking. And there's been enough discussion here that the applicant and staff know how we feel about a lot of this, that most of the, rest of the items are to be researched or negotiated, and that the parking is the big issue. I think we've kind of, I feel like we've covered it.
I'm only looking at, you know, with experience that I've had on the zoning board, a lot of times, this stuff comes in front of the zoning board, and the only thing the zoning board sees is, the only thing the zoning board sees is that we reject it. They really don't see any positives that we put in it.
What would you like to say? You got, no, you got to say something.
Well, I think that, I think that it has to say that the reason why we are rejecting it is because of parking and only because of parking. There are some, you know, something to the effect that it's a better plan, it's the best plan we've seen, its issue is parking.
Charlie, but hang on a second.
I'm not so sure we all feel that way.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, maybe that's it. It seemed that's what a lot of people thought I thought.
Better...
It seemed to be, when everybody kind of put their thing in, their two cents in, or their opinions, it was, parking was an issue and traffic. And parking and traffic are really the same issue. I didn't hear anybody say anything else other than that.
That's why I phrased the motion the way I did because there are, as the chairman suggested several times, other items that have to be cleaned up before the plan would be in its final form. But there's just one huge hurdle now that we've learned about, and that's the parking structure. So the simplest and best thing to do is to say, oh, we have to reject the plan because of the problems with the parking structure. And essentially, that's the motion.
Can we vote on it? Will you second?
I gave it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Okay.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we take a three-minute break? I'll hit the menu.
We're going to take a three-minute rest break.
Okay, I'd like to bring the meeting back to order.
Frontage, all right.
Okay, we're all gonna get going again? So next on the agenda, that's the old one, is 115 Stratford Avenue, revised plan to convert an existing non-conforming commercial building back to a single-family detached dwelling and construct a multi-dwelling group to consist of five townhomes and related improvements at 120 Bloomingdale Avenue. The applicant's here?
Yes.
Please come up and get started.
We're here. I represent Benson and we're here for 120 and 124 Bloomingdale. And I'd like to show you what we want to build and then I'll show you where we want to build it. And then I'll have Chuck Dobson, our engineer, come up and address the technical issues. This plan was before the board, I believe, back in October in a different configuration. We resubmitted, we've gotten comments, we've gotten some suggestions that we would like to implement that we think make sense, but let me give you the overview. So, go ahead, Bo. So, this is Bloomingdale Avenue. Lancaster Avenue is this way. West Wayne Avenue is this way. There is an existing, yeah, I'm not tall enough to both look at the plan. Thank you. So what we want to do is reconfigure the two lots. It's highly technical and what we want to do is reconfigure two lots. We want to preserve the existing art gallery that is really an, a house and it has some historical value. We want to convert it back to a dwelling. We want to take the other side of the lot and we want to build five units. Now, this is the plan, this is the configuration that was recently reviewed and Mr. Daly suggested that maybe what we want to do, and we can get into why, is flip the three units to the left side and leave, and put the two units on the right side. Gets us away from some steep slope issues and gives us a little bit more space there in the back. So, Bo, if you can give me the plan, and as you will see down here on the corner, this one's still not dry. 322015, we're trying to respond because when the day is over, we would like you, I know you asked this question before, so I'm gonna say it right up front, we would like you to recommend approval of this with conditions. So that's my broad overview. It's probably all that I know about this property because George wanted to go to Lower Murray and tonight and I had to step in, but Chuck knows everything about it. So let me turn this over to Chuck.
Thank you, Mark. I think I might be able to use the microphone here.
Yeah, you're bigger than me.
As Mark indicated, the, the application was in front of the township in, in the fall.
Chuck, can I get your name again?
I'm sorry, Charles Dobson, Inland Design, the engineer for the project. The, the project was in front of the planning commission in the fall. We received comments and in response to those comments, we had resubmitted a preliminary plan that is consistent with that particular rendering that you see on the table. We have received review letters from your township engineer, your township traffic engineer and your township planner and as well as your, I guess Ray Daly is the emergency management coordinator for the township. We did not see anything in those letters except for maybe two comments by Mr. Gabriel that don't, that represent anything other than a will comply for us. So I can go through the plan in great detail or kind of summarize it for you if you wish. It's really up to you.
I'd like to, if you can summarize and then tell me the items that you, you know, don't want to comply with.
Okay, certainly. And it's really not a not comply, it's more of a disagreement, but we.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, not a problem. Again, approximately 1.3 acres. We have an existing dwelling, which is the art gallery, which will be converted back to residential. We have an existing building over here, which will be demolished. You can see on this existing features plan that there is a, an irregular lot line that separates the two lots. That lot line will be reconfigured into, to allow the lot that, where the five units are going to be located to be larger, that is sheet five of 14. Sorry, I'm a little off the camera there. And the remaining lot, the lot that is going to house the, that's going to have the existing dwelling, which will remain, has been reduced in size, but it is still compliant with the zoning. So the idea is to access, provide access to the five proposed units via a driveway accessing Bloomingdale Avenue. There will be three off-site parking spaces and I also want to mention that there, each of the units will have a two-car garage, so there will be two parking spaces per unit. And then there, we also have an area of turnaround which is not impervious, but allows service vehicles, any other large trucks to get into the site, access through and basically exit via the driveway onto Bloomingdale Avenue. And if you were to look at sheet, I believe it's sheet 12, we have provided turning templates for those, those vehicles. We have a fire, fire truck and a box truck, and I think that the box truck is a good representation of any sort of trash removal vehicle that would be used. It's about the same size, but.
You say that's not impervious or it is impervious?
It is not impervious. These are, these are intended to be grass pavers. It's effectively, it's gonna be lawn, it's gonna look like lawn, but it's gonna be stabilized so that when it's, you know, if a vehicle actually accesses that area, it'll be able to hold the weight of the vehicle. Not a problem. We have basically, in response to Mr. Daly's comments about concerns about getting to the rear of the, I guess, unit five, what we've simply done by presenting the alternate rendering to you tonight is to simply flip them. And what that does is that provides two units here, three units here, and it alleviates Mr. Daly's concerns about potentially getting access to the rear of these two.
Could you show that on the, on the, on the plan which has been flipped?
Uh, yes. So as you can see, these units here, Mr. Daly's concern was, I guess, a pinch point of access for emergency services by moving this unit to this side of the driveway. We've effectively eliminated his concern and I want to point out that he actually made that suggestion in his letter and we thought it was a good suggestion.
Does that flipping make the, I'll call it the rectangular area at the top shift over into where that depression is located? Is there a depression over there? That was an issue the last time, right? Isn't there a swell or some sort of depression in the, in the back property line?
Well, let's go to the existing features.
I'm looking at sheet six of 14, maybe I'm misreading.
Actually, if you don't mind, why don't you just finish with your presentation? Then we can ask all the questions we have. I don't want to sidetrack you.
Okay, not a problem. Well, actually, that, that really is the presentation. We've provided, you know, buffering as required by the ordinance. I know your township engineer has made some recommendations as to perhaps a little bit more is needed there. We're fine with working out whatever details need to be worked out with respect to the buffering. We understand what the requirements are and if your engineer has a different interpretation, we're more than happy to discuss that with him.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Bo. The other thing too is from a housekeeping perspective is we did go to the Shade Tree Commission last week and we did obtain approval from the Shade Tree Commission for this plan.
Okay.
Well, my question was, the last time I saw the plan, there were some issues with a drop-off in the, at the back property line?
That's correct.
And I think it still appears on the plan. If you move that, if you, when you flip this over, which seems like a, a good idea though, how do you handle that? Is that, is that gonna move that rectangular area over into where that depression is?
Uh, not really. See, what you have here, if you're looking at sheet six of 14, you can see that there's some, there's grading that's required at the back end of unit five here on this particular configuration. If that is flipped, that grading will no longer be required and actually the intrusion into that area is actually gonna be reduced.
You would put the under subsurface pavers over in that area and then return it to its current slope, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. We would, we would minimize any impact of that area. Effectively, what you're doing is you're simply mirroring the whole, the configuration.
How about some of the zoning issues under the Gannon Fleming letter? Under zoning number three, the side yard, does that, is that corrected with the flipping?
I want to make sure I get to the right letter.
I'm sorry, well, maybe it's under two. No, it's Gannon Fleming. Page two.
What, what Roger's referring to is there is a Bilko door on the existing dwelling here.
Okay.
The property line where it sits right in this location actually isn't changing. So it's an existing non-conformity that's simply gonna remain.
Okay. And how about the variance obtained for the, the placement of the retaining wall? Do you still need that?
Well, that's, that's a matter of interpretation. One of the things that we've had discussions with staff about was that we felt very strongly that those slopes were man-made largely as a result of the addition for the existing dwelling to remain as well as the garage, not only, notwithstanding the fact that the existing building was also created that, that condition. We've actually gotten information which I think will help to expedite that whole review process whereby I think we can prove that they are in fact man-made and are not subject to the strict interpretation of the ordinance.
Meaning you have the grading permit for them?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Okay.
So there, in, in simplistic terms, there are three alternatives here.
I think you need the mic.
There are three alternatives with regard to this little area that may or may not be characterized as steep slopes. Number one, there, we believe and we have the zoning decision where the, where the house was expanded and we're very sure that the dirt that was used from the grading or from that excavation was merely put back there and that was, so you have a man-made slope according to the ordinance that's created because of a permit condition. That's, well, this isn't just, let me, that's one alternative. Second alternative is that we do nothing with regard to intrusion into the steep slopes. Let me make this clear. First of all, we are not building in the steep slopes. So the steep slopes are not a problem. The issue is how do we maximize the attractiveness of this property? So either it's not a steep slope and staff will agree with that or they won't. If they don't agree with it, then we have two choices. We can either go to the zoning hearing board and get a variance or the clarification, just like our office has gotten a number of times in these situations, Tom Bentley's job down on Township Line Road and I know George has gotten it with, with the Gorman subdivision, where you have these little things that pop out for one reason or another and it makes no sense to leave them that way, but that's alternative number two, in which case then we could do the grading, we could create the best backyard, we could, we could improve the product a little bit, or we just, we just work around it without touching the steep slopes. These are not obviously the kind of steep slopes that caused, when you, when you get rid of them, cause some kind of drainage problem. So it's one of those three alternatives, none of which will change how the plan is configured. Because in the worst case, we'll just leave them. We'll just, we'll, we'll build around them and not affect the steep slopes.
On, on the paver issue, how many, how many square feet and how would that affect your impervious area?
Well, it's not counted as impervious now. I don't have the calculation of exactly how many square feet that is, but I can get that information for you.
Okay. Are we counting pavers as pervious now, Kevin? Because I know there was a time we weren't doing that.
Depends on the type of paver. My understanding, if they're using the stabilized subsurface gravers with the grass on top of it, that is pervious. If they were using a concrete paver at the, at the surface. If they were using a concrete paver at the surface where it's visible, or even the checker block, only a portion of that is pervious. So depending on the situation, what they're proposing here, from my understanding, would all be considered pervious.
Is there, is there any stormwater runoff? Is there stormwater runoff on the site?
There is, and we have, we have a plan. We have a detention facility located in the area of the driveway that controls all of the stormwater runoff as required by ordinance.
Okay.
On the lot line for lot, the single family.
Yes.
You are creating a new non-conformity with regard to the rear yard setback with that garage. What's your plan for that? It has a pre-existing side yard non-conformity, but it will now have a rear yard non-conformity, rear yard setback. Do you see that?
I do.
So what's the plan for that?
Oh, for the accessory use.
It's accessory.
All right, right. Yes, I think that would be, and Beau just reminded me, I believe your ordinance has a provision where accessory uses can be set within three feet of a property line. And I don't believe, since this is not the primary structure, it is in fact an accessory structure, I don't believe that the rear property, the rear yard setback should in fact apply.
I think they have to be separated from the principal building by at least 10 feet. And I'm not sure that that building is, that that accessory building is separated by 10 feet. 280-22B has to be 10 feet, and I don't think that that's 10 feet. So I'm not sure that that exception applies.
Well, let's answer the question right now. By my scaling of the survey that we have, the distance between the house and the garage, I don't know if that shows up here, but this is a 20-scale plan, it's exactly 10 feet.
Susan, the provision you just read from is the R2 district. This is the R5, if I understood correctly.
I'm sorry, I had the wrong page. What's the accessory structure for R5? Or does it not? Oh, here we go, thank you. Well, it's the same thing. It had to be 10 feet, but you're saying it's exactly 10 feet.
Section 35.
It is 10 feet, yes.
Yeah, 35B8. But Kevin, he's saying it's 10 feet, so it doesn't matter either way. He's saying that.
Yes, well, I didn't think it was an issue regardless.
Okay, well, that's what I was asking about it. All right.
Any other comments, questions?
There was, I mean, I'd asked a question of staff about the whole net lot area.
Well, I think, yeah, we want to get to public comment first. So, you good?
That's it, that's all I have.
All right. Anybody that has some public comment, now's your chance.
I'll show that also. Barron Gemmer, South Wayne Avenue. My wife and I own the property immediately to the left of this, if you're looking from Bloomingdale Avenue. I also, the, so it's not confusing. They're just showing a sidewalk between the houses, when obviously that's where the driveway is. So it's a little misleading there. What I, and I know staff may address this later, but let me, let me talk about, first off, obviously, we haven't had a chance to take a look at the flip plan, if that's what the current proposal is. We're dealing with what was submitted and went to Shade Tree on Wednesday. The, I think there's also confusion here about what this is in terms of an actual submission, and since this qualifies as land development, because there's two or more residential buildings, there requires a preliminary and a final submission. So the fact that this says is a final should, and again, staff may address this, but this has to be a preliminary. The next comment I have is on, see if I can zoom in. Let me, Jim, if you can zoom in. I've got a few of these that are, oh, that's great. Beautiful. The, I'm going to use the pointer for a few of these. The drive width here is 22, and that's what it was in the prior plan. And so, and there's not a comment on that regarding SALVO, but there was in the prior plan. It's at 255-29A-12B. The width of entrance and exit drive should be a minimum of 25 feet for two-way use. This is 22, much like the other plan was, but that comment was missing from the, from the review. So that's a SALVO issue. Maybe I missed it then. I saw, I looked at the reviews that I, the new ones. All right. Okay. Let me, Susan, this may address your, actually. What I've, what I've done is I've blown up the plan here and have everything to the same scale. So I've also blown up the, pointer won't stay, the scale here. So I'm going to leave the mic for a second and show you the 10 feet here. And you can see it's about, it's nine and a half. If you, if you blow it up, you can see it's next to like 9'4", I think, if you do it. So it is under 10 feet. It would require a variance, since that is now getting into the backyard.
Could you slide that, slide that up? All the way up to the very end of the structure? So it's still, it's still, it's still under 10 there.
Yeah, I mean, as long as, as long as it's 10 feet anywhere, that's the.
I didn't know what it was, so, good.
Yeah, so that's, let's see, what else was I going to do? Let's see, steep slopes. Interesting theory on steep slopes, again, unless, if they can produce a grading permit, but there's a lot of steep slopes on the property, so let me go over a few of those. Let me try the handheld mic here. Is that working? No, okay, great. Let me show you some of the steep slopes here. Now, one of the things you have to know about this plan is that the elevation lines are two-foot elevation lines. So 10 feet only needs to cross from one elevation line to the next in order to show steep slopes. For example, here to here, that's a 40-foot steep slope, because you can see the 10 feet cross, not only the line it starts with crosses over another line and hits another line. That's a four-foot drop over 10 feet. That's 40 feet. There's a lot of steep slopes on this plan that aren't indicated. For example, all of these are steep slopes. That's within, that's 20, that's two feet over, less than 10, all the way around. So I'm going to show some more briefly, just to get the idea, but there's a lot of steep slopes on this plan that just simply are not marked. Some are going to be more relevant than others. And here's some examples, some other ones. Let's see. Again, around the, around the tree there, there's 10, so that's steep. Because this is a 366 mark, that's a 368 mark. There's 368, 370. I don't know why that white's there, those are all steep slopes. And near that area that I just showed, again, this is working on the original plan, which is the two on the left and three on the right. This won't matter, because I'm going to talk about the middle building right now, which doesn't, there's still going to be a second building, whether it's three or two over there. And again, if you look at the steep slopes that are relevant there, you'll see, without me getting in the way here, so it might be a little hard to see, but here's the one mark and here's the other. And there's the 10 feet. It goes into the patio of that unit. It also goes into the stormwater of that unit, the dotted dash line you see right there, which is true, again, no matter what the configuration is. Over here in front of the other building, these two lines here, 364 and 360, 364 and 366, I believe, you can see the 10 feet there. So, well, I'm sorry, using 10 to 20, but this is steep slopes. It goes all the way up to the side here with that, that 10 feet. So that's again a two-foot drop over 10 feet. And let me show you where that hits on the plan, then.
Yeah, I, I think you made your point on the steep slopes.
Okay, let me just do one more thing, and then we'll be done, we're done with that. It's more important in this area, because that hits the garage of this first unit, which, again, is going to exist no matter where the plan is flipped, whether it's a three or a two. You see it goes through here, it hits that garage, it hits that part of the building, it hits the whole patio, it also hits that stormwater management. So, problem with the plan is there are many, many steep slopes not marked, regardless of what they plan, how they plan to deal with them. Next issue is the, may not be an issue. Over here on their proposed plan, and these, these were three and seven sheets, if you're trying to follow along between the, where the steep slopes were marked. On the patio here, it says the patio elevation is 367.25, and they show the proposed elevations, 365, 366. They don't show 367 on there, so assuming that one doesn't exist. But that would make the patio elevated and no longer applicable to be within the rear yard set, or the side yard setback, which it is. Those patios that were on the left, as we showed, encroaching into the rear yard, and that's only allowed if they're surface. And this is showing an elevation unless they're missing that 367 line somewhere for this particular one. On the, this is the upper right-hand corner of the lot, where they're changing the lot line to go above the existing single-family homes lot. What I believe they're creating here is a non-conforming piece of the lot, because if you see, it's 43.67 deep from here to here. But in the, in that lot that they're creating, the minimum front yard is 50 feet, forgetting the fact of what the, what the rear yard is. So their building line is, would be in someone else's yard there, as well as, I don't think it qualifies the minimum, the minimum open space within the lot before you hit a building. It's, there isn't that minimum open space, it's only 43 feet. It's not 50 feet.
Does that butt onto a street right there?
I'm sorry?
It's onto a street right there?
No, that butts onto somebody, this is another, that's another yard, lot.
I mean, on the right.
On the, no, this is also another lot.
That's, that's the backside. They probably did it to pick up the imperv, yeah, additional open space there. So they're not, it's not subdivided as a separate lot, so I don't think that's an issue.
I understand that. I would argue that it creates a zoning non-conformity. That's, that's what I'm saying here. I know why they're doing it. I'm arguing what it's creating.
Difference of opinions.
Let me put this down. The, the last two issues I have, the first one has to do with the, the calculations of impervious in building area. And I want to bring up, around the corner from here, Adalberg's, where Jardine was, was built. In the review letter from David Lay of Gilmore and Associates, what was required of that applicant, it says, section 280-35B, "The zoning compliance tabulation indicates that the allowable existing and proposed building area and impervious coverage percentages within the R5 portion of the site are based upon the net lot area. The provided calculations are inconsistent, as some are based on the gross lot area and some are based on the net lot area. All calculations must be revised to be based on the net lot area. Further, the net lot area for the R5 portion of the property must be revised to subtract 75% of the slopes equal to or in excess of 20%." Now, the review letter also went on to say the same thing about C1, which, what isn't mentioned in the, in the appropriate subsection of SALVO. So the applicant appealed to the zoning hearing board, and Mr. Falcone may remember this, the case back in 2012, and, because this is what was appealed. The determination letter advised the applicant that a appellant could not include open land within the right-of-way of adjoining streets in the calculation of impervious coverage of the C1 portion of the subject premises. There wasn't any question about whether the impervious was there, that you don't include the impervious in the right-of-way, but they were being told to exclude the right-of-way from the lot area for the percentage calculations. They appealed that, and they were successful in that. They did, the R5 was not appealed, and that's, to me, the language is pretty clear on that, and that's what it says. "All of the current calculations are based upon gross lot area, just without any subtractions, either for right-of-way or for steep slopes." And the last issue is one that I brought up with the, with the prior application, because it had a similar issue. And you can kind of see the complications that run in here. My contention is that in this district, you cannot mix a three-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling. Because when you, if you look at the use regulations, it's a building or where authorized a multiple dwelling group, and then it goes on to describe, "Any use permitted in R5," which references all the way back to R1, which is a single-family detached home. Single-family, B is single-family semi-detached dwelling. C is a two-family detached dwelling. And what's left after that are three or more families in a dwelling, which is what D refers to as a multiple dwelling. And then E is the multiple dwelling group, which would be multiple of those, not pulling back for a two-family or for a, a single family, which they tried to do in the, in the first plan. And that's, that's actually supported in many parts of the code. I think, I don't know if Susan had referenced that in terms of the confusion, because now you've got, if you've got the two-family there, you've got different impervious requirements for it versus a multiple dwelling. But more importantly, if you look at like R6 and Plan Apartment, they're much clearer in terms of allowing the multiple buildings of the other types, because they say, "A building or unified buildings, group of buildings may be constructed to use and may be occupied for any of the following." And then they go into the list, and the same thing on Plan Apartment, which actually allows multiple single-family dwellings on the same, on the same lot. So my contention is that doesn't comply with the zoning for that. Furthermore, whether, whenever you have the two-family dwelling, no matter what it's a part of, whether you consider it to be a part of this or not, it doesn't have the 40-foot height. It's, it's going to be the same 35-foot that, that the, the single family and the, and the two families are specified. I don't know if, if staff or the solicitors have weighed in on this, but that we, because we really didn't become relevant last time necessarily, because of all the other steep slopes. But that is a strong contention that that is, is non-compliant with the zoning.
Okay, great, thanks. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Please come up, or state your name and address when you get here.
I'm Kenneth Lane, and I own the property directly behind at 207 West Wayne Avenue. So it goes along the complete property line, back property line, with the house also at, in the corner of the art gallery. My major concern is in landscaping. Right now, they, because part of the property was commercial, they had, they put Arboretum, Arbivida. Now it's very, very, very tall.
Arbivida. Yeah. Arbivida.
Arbivida, okay. Now it's very, very tall. It provides a great deal of privacy to all my property. I, I am a gardener, so I have a formal garden behind it. And I would like that, because now there's going to be more traffic, possibly. And there'll be, I am not quite sure how the, where the cars, mainly lighting, when a car comes in, it shines into your property or your house. And that's my major concern, is that, that, that the planning's already there might be destroyed, which gives me less privacy. And I just wanted to return and kept, or kept the same. That's it.
Okay, great.
We're going to, we're going to preserve the Arbivida.
Okay, we'll note that.
Good evening. My name is Drew Saunders, 1118 Lafayette Road in Wayne. I'm actually the owner of the art gallery, and I've prepared some, some remarks. I'm actually the owner of the art gallery, and I've prepared some remarks and comments, which I prefer to read as I, I'm a little intimidated by being in front of you all. But first of all, a bit of history on Bloomingdale. As you may know, this was the first street in Wayne, and this is sort of a macro thing compared to what Barron just did. I'm not getting into any of the legalities, I'm just sort of giving a, again, a perspective. The, the street was developed in the early 1870s by Henry Asken, and he named the town Luella, as you all probably know, after his two daughters, Louise and Ella, and Wayne was Luella before it was Wayne. And their home on Luella Court has recently been made into condominiums, which have been enthusiastically received. Asken developed Bloomingdale with the intent of starting a thriving community of families close to a central shopping district. In the 1870s, I think he went into bankruptcy, his legacy remains, but in a somewhat different context, because today the building still exists, but there are no families in the 100 block of Bloomingdale Avenue. In terms of my own history, I grew up on Midland Avenue, I graduated from Radnor, and I purchased this building 35 years ago in 1980. It was on the market for a couple of years, a developer wanted to buy it and tear it down, and we bought it with the promise of restoring it. We were granted a special exception and have operated an art gallery there for 33 years. So, I'm deeply committed to this street and then to the preservation of it and to the township as well. There are seven buildings similar to my own on Bloomingdale, that were all part of Asken's original Luella plan. I have spoken to all seven of the owners of these properties, and six of the owners of them support this change that's being proposed for my property and the one adjacent to it. Six of the seven. The property next to mine, someone had said is historically significant, it was designed by the brother of an architect who apparently achieved some kind of local renown as an architect, but again, it was his brother. If you have ever seen the building, it is nondescript outside and a rabbit-warn inside, is all I can think of, a way to describe it. And of all the seven buildings, none are used as family homes, but as apartments, offices, and commercial ventures. In the evenings and on weekends, this block of Bloomingdale is like a morgue. So, tonight, we are being given a chance to help restore this block of Bloomingdale to something more similar to what Asken had intended. Change is coming, and tonight, we have before us a good plan. My building will be converted back into a single-family home, five high-end townhouses for families will be constructed next to it, and I feel that Bloomingdale Avenue will once again gain vitality and energy, and we can help keep Henry Asken's dream alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? I think we have staff's comments. Does the staff want to address any of the other comments made, or should we just?
I just have one, Mr. Chairman, on the turning radius, turning template for the truck. I'm not quite sure that does match our trash trucks, and I do have concern with, not with the grass pavers, per se, they're, they're fine product and they work, but the actual maintenance of that, whether it be snow plowing or snow being plowed up there, so I would just ask the applicant, I don't see that our township trash trucks backing down there, or pulling down and turning around, so I would just ask them to consider making some other arrangements as other entities do for trash.
Steve, trash will be private.
Thank you.
I just have, you know, a bunch of these technical issues that Barron brought up, I've got a whole list of them here. Is that something that we've looked at, that you are prepared to discuss tonight, or do you need to look at it further?
He brought up a few items tonight that I was not initially aware of. I can touch on one of the items, the steep slopes. My office was in contact with Mr. Dobson today, we've agreed to sit down and work out a little bit through these steep slope issues. He has a, we have to review the contours a little closer than what, what is shown on the plan at this point to determine that. If there are determined to be steep slope issues, they will have to go through the process of zoning, or whatever the process is, as a result of what we find, to move forward with that. Second item I'd like to address, Mr. Gemmer brought up a previous review letter from a previous consultant for another project discussing net lot area, and we reviewed that today, and I discussed that with Peter, and that, our, or my opinion, I don't want to speak for Peter, he can speak for himself, is the determination made in that review letter and the determination that Mr. Gemmer is speaking of tonight is actually incorrect. And if you follow the actual definitions of lot area in the zoning, it doesn't refer to the exceptions of anything with regard to steep slopes or wetlands or anything. The definition that they're referring to is actually in the SALDO, which does not apply to the lot areas when calculated for zoning.
Okay, and then the driveway width, 22 to 25 feet?
We'll take a further look at that.
Okay, good. Also, the, I guess, the 10-foot, you know, distance between the accessory structure, if you could look at that as well?
We've already discussed that, and I believe that it's acceptable the way it is. We've actually reviewed the code on that.
Okay. The patio elevation, if you could take a look at that, please. Let's see, the zoning, I'm assuming we already vetted the zoning, also got this far, right? But if we could, but he was mentioning this, this with, it's either two or three, but not three and two?
No, I believe that that falls under the multiple dwelling group, which has a set of provisions in there.
Okay.
That's the way I was looking at it, I believe that's the way.
So, we're okay, we're okay on zoning, we vetted zoning. What's that? No, 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 you're not staff. Yeah, 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 I'm just asking questions, so. Sleep slopes, okay, we talked about that. All right, that's all the questions I have for staff, but... Questions for staff?
I don't have any questions for staff, no.
Susan?
I mean, I have my, I've raised a lot of these questions, I share them, I don't, you know, I guess it'll play out, but the, I do actually have a question for Steve Gabriel, because I've seen this comment several times, and I just, I want to remark on it. With regard to the, the consistency with the comprehensive plan, and number one states that you think this plan meets a goal to maintain a supply of affordable and market-rate housing, one of the things that concerns me is that, in fact, I think the exact opposite is happening in Radnor. All of these condo developments that have occurred have been extraordinarily high-end, and, and Mr. Saunders just actually, I was going to ask the applicant kind of what price point he was thinking about for these, but, you know, the condos and the townhomes and the, everything we've gotten in the town recently in the last two years has been nothing but, I think, million-dollar plus. And I just, I would urge Mr. Gabriel to really take a look at, do we really think that that is keeping a supply of affordable housing in the township? And it's not, you know, the applicant's fault, it's not your fault, I think one of the problems going on is that the market forces in Radnor are creating a situation where, you know, somebody is paying, I don't know what they're paying for the property, but then feel obliged to put a very high-end product on the property to, you know, reback their investment, and I, you know, I'm patently aware of that, that that's in fact what's happening. And it's, it's a little bit disconcerting to me that we're not getting anything in any kind of mid-range housing market at all. It's not, it's not a zoning issue, it doesn't change the plan, it doesn't do any of that.
There's nothing we can do about it.
Correct.
And it's, and it's not, it's not even driven by this, it's driven by the fact that there are a large supply of people who will spend a million dollars to be in Radnor. And there's nothing we can do about that.
Right. The, I, I don't know if any of the other staff have any comments on some of the issues that Barron raised, and emails that I, you know, questions that I had asked about some of these things as well. That was my only other comment.
I have one question, it just occurred to me. Looking at the Kenneth Fleming letter, it says that there's a 90-day expiration extended to April 30th, 2015. So, if we were to table this pending resolution of all these issues, would it come back to us before April 30th?
It could, yes. Okay.
Bo Erickson, I'm the applicant. I'm hoping that you can hopefully vote on this and hopefully give us an approval conditioned on us doing one of the three things Mark suggested, not building in the steep slopes, going and getting variance for the slopes, or having them ruled by staff that they aren't steep slopes. That way, we can move forward, we can move forward towards the board. We have already gotten approval from the planning, or from the shade tree, and we have Harb coming up this week, we expect to get their approval. I think the view of these homes is very attractive, most of the neighborhood is in favor of this project, and I hope we can have your approval to at least move forward with us complying with the comments in all the review letters that we have received.
Well, one concern I have is that suddenly there's a discussion about how much actual steep slope there is. I mean, Roger seemed to say they wanted to review it a little further, that, I mean, if you're, if you're agreeing on the spot just to not build on or touch steep slopes, you might not be able to build on anything at all, depending on how many, how extensive they are.
Well, from what I've seen, looking at the plan, not this, not the presentation that I saw, but sitting with my client, we don't believe that we're going to build in the steep slopes. Now, if it turns out that Roger comes up and there's a disagreement and we're going to, and we're going to have to build in the steep slope, then we're going to have to do something about it. We're either going to have to change it, and if we change it, we'll have to come back, or we'll go to zoning hearing board, but either way, we're, we're not intending to change the plan unless there's some catastrophe here. We can work around the steep slopes that we know about, one way or the other, without changing the plan. Now, turns out that there's something else, well, then the approval, then the recommendation for the approval won't mean anything, because the plan will have to change. So, but, but the plan is not, I just don't see any reason to hold us up, that's really, I'm basically saying the same thing that Bo is saying, we're going to have to satisfy Roger, one way or another.
I just, one comment, you're fine, Mark. Can we take public comment again? Come on. But while you're on your way up, I just question to the board, you know, I would like, in instances like this, if possible, to try and get these things preliminary approved or approved and keep the process moving. If it's too complicated, and if there's too many strings attached, I get it, we need to table. But if we could, as a board, come and list, you know, the conditions, and get this thing approved and moved on, then I'd like to try and accomplish that tonight, at least at a preliminary level, which, which is, I think, the appropriate plan of action.
Yeah, I, I respect that position when there's housekeeping items, when there's questions of zoning and building and steep slopes, that's not an insignificant thing. I mean, and maybe, maybe my vote will reflect that, depending on what the motion is. And I, I so apologize, I did forget that I did have a specific question for staff, and I raised it a few hours ago, and I do, I do want to have an answer to this, after that, so just before we decide.
Welcome back, yeah.
One small thing, I may be the only one that knows anything about the steep slope, because no one can even get to it. It is very steep in places. And a positive thing, if it can be left alone, it would be a good thing for nature, because it's the only place where I have found a deer, because the deer has not gotten that far, but I have found one there, and it's just natural, and it's never been changed for, since probably when the grade was made. So, it would be best, from my viewpoint, to leave a little bit of nature there, if it can be.
Okay, great, thanks.
There's an economy I need to address.
All right, all right, but please come up, in the future, though, when we cut it off, we cut it off.
There's comments I didn't, I don't agree with, that didn't come up until just recently. So, Edsidele 203 West Wayne Avenue, one of the adjoining property owners, so I don't necessarily agree that all the neighbors are in support of this, as I'm one of the adjoining ones, and I haven't kind of made that decision yet, so that's what I'll say.
Okay, thank you. Susan?
So, if I follow the line of reasoning, the reason that lot area in zoning doesn't deduct for the steep slopes is that that's a provision in SALDO, that's the argument tonight, or that's the, the two different sides of the story. And my question is, if lot area calculations are provided for in SALDO, which provisions in SALDO do they, do they apply? It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense that they would provide, that they would be provided in SALDO to drive something in SALDO. Zoning says, this is what you can do, this is how much area you need, and this is what you can do in a particular zoning district. And SALDO says, this is how you can do it. These are the, these are the regulations that you have to conform to, you know, what it needs to look like, the street width, the whatever. And it doesn't follow for me, I can't figure out what provision in SALDO the lot area calculations would apply to, other than to say that, and it says it very clearly in the definition of lot in zoning, that when you're doing a subdivision, you have to adhere to SALDO. And the definition for SALDO, in SALDO for lot area, is you have to take out the steep slopes, you know, and the floodplains and all sorts of other things. But if it doesn't apply to lot area calculation, what SALDO provision do they apply to? That's, that's really my question.
Can I quickly explain that?
Sure.
Unfortunately, they don't apply to anything in SALDO, and it's one of the anomalies of this code that we have to deal with, but, you know, that's our burden. Section 25534 in SALDO is called lots, it's entitled lots. Item A refers to Section 280 for dimensional and area requirements of the lot. Under 280, in the definition, it defines a lot that doesn't remove any of those items that you're talking about. It's a contradiction in the code, however, the definition of lot area in SALDO cannot travel to zoning, to 280.
There's been a lot of, I appreciate that, Roger, thank you, I do, I do recognize what you're saying, and I guess I would say one of two things. There's been a lot of instances in the four and a half years I've been on the board where we've deducted for steep slopes. There's been a lot of precedent for that, so, and there was a zoning hearing decision where the applicant had an opportunity to challenge it at Adalbergers, and he didn't. So, precedent alone would suggest that that should be the case. But beyond that, if that's not the case, I'm going to ask this board, we need to fix that. We need to make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to fix that, because that is wrong, if applicants are now going to not have to deduct for steep slopes. I'll put it under new business, Steve.
Thank you very much. So, as we decide which direction we're going to go tonight, so first, I guess I'd like to ask staff if you feel like there are manageable issues, that if we recommended approval with contingencies, that you could handle them, or do you think it's too unwieldy? A little, you know, is there too many items?
No, I, I think these are pretty core items that they need to resolve, core issues that directly affect planning and directly affect the layout of this plan possibly. I don't think it would be appropriate to move this forward, I think it needs to come back to you once these things have been resolved. That being said, I also have another issue that hasn't been raised yet, which has to do with the configuration of this, the smaller lot, the single-family house lot. I don't understand why, I understand why it's, it's built that way, if they put it all the way straight back to the rear lot line, I think they violate- If they put it all the way straight back to the rear lot line, I think they violate the requirement of SALDO, that the width can't be more than correct. But at the same time, the way they have it built now, with the little jog, it violates another section of SALDO. I don't understand why the side lot line makes that angle as it approaches the back of the lot. And furthermore, I think, if, the only thing they're avoiding here is the two and a half to one ratio, and that's why they're cutting it off in back, I think it should go all the way straight back. It's gonna make a lot more sense, it's gonna prevent neighbor, neighbor conflicts in the future. It also addresses the garage and the rear yard setback. So unless there's an actual reason why they want to have that little area in the back there, that, that tail on the other lot, my recommendation is to have that lot line go all the way back, and then ask for a waiver to the ratio requirement.
I would imagine it has to do with, with impervious, though, potentially as well, the calculation.
Well, I don't know, and that's, that's why I ask.
With, with that recommendation, would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we table the plan.
Second.
Can I ask a question, so that I understand what we're saying?
Yes, please come up.
I, I just, Peter, I, I want a clarification.
I'm sorry, I want a clarification of what you said. We have cut the lot line that way so that we can balance impervious. I'm not sure I understand whether you're saying that you would like the line to go back, or there's some obligation for the line to go back.
No, I was saying I would like the line to go back. There is, there is an arguably obligation, but it, you're, if you put the line all the way straight back, I recognize you then violate another section of SALDO. So it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't type of situation. And, but I had no, I, there was no indication that I saw, no explanation why, other than avoiding that lot depth to width ratio requirement, why you cut off the lot, why you create that little, you know, tail there on the bigger lot. But if it's, if it's an impervious surface issue, that explains it.
It is.
But Bo, Bo, you say it. That area, we want that area to be preserved in its current condition. It's an important buffer for the homeowners, Mr. Holman, who's not here this evening, it's the high ground on the property. We want it to be attached to the development of the five townhomes, because that will be managed by the HOA, and it'll be permanently preserved. Versus if we put it as part of the single-family home that will be sold, we wouldn't have the ability to really protect that in the future. So we think, from a short-term and a long-term perspective, it makes a lot of sense, and we think that'd be the best thing for the neighbors that live right around it.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to get back to our motion, if we just start all over again.
I move to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So moved. Thank you, everyone. Is planning module for 205 Stratford Avenue. Roger.
What this is, is the, the land development that was previously before you a while ago and approved was 205 Stratford. This is the DEP planning module for land development. It has gone through all of the downstream agencies and authorities, and the treatment authority for, for this. Now it's at a point where this planning commission can approve this, and the, it'll then go to the, to the commissioners, who will pass a resolution, and it'll be forwarded to DEP for review and processing.
Is there anything to discuss? I mean, it's just...
I don't think so.
Okay, now 205 Stratford is the one that, that, it's at the corner of Eagle Road and Stratford Avenue on the other side, is that correct?
That, that's correct, yes.
And there are three of those houses along Eagle Road, if I remember correctly, and then the...
That's, that's correct, yes.
The main house is gonna stay, and then you're gonna build, okay.
Yeah, and this is the planning module for the four new homes. The, the existing house was already connected.
Could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is old business, any old business, anyone? For new business, I have a few items, I know Susan does, but the Board of Commissioners has requested that we change the meeting times to the planning commission to 6:30. I know there's been some email traffic about this, six o'clock time, seven o'clock time, I know a lot of the board prefers seven, but I'm kind of feeling like this isn't a request, so, but, but, you know, let me have your, if there's strong objections, let's have them.
I think I've already said I'll go with whatever the majority wants to do, but I don't, if we go to 6:30, I think we should end earlier.
Yeah, well, that'll, that's the next item on my agenda, but, go ahead.
I prefer seven, and I think the two ladies who are absent tonight also mentioned that they do. But if it's 6:30, I will get here.
Great, I think that's...
But it's not convenient.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Well, and I, I much prefer seven over 6:30 myself, because, you know.
Trains get late.
Okay, Doug, I mean...
I prefer seven, I'll be here at 6:30, but I prefer seven because I think it's more fair to the public to.
Why is it the Board of Commissioners wants everything at 6:30?
I didn't ask. Anybody at staff can help me here?
Well, I think they first moved their meeting early, and Steve and Kevin can correct me if I'm wrong, but, for the very reason that their meetings were going quite long and quite late. And in my experience, you get much past 10, things start getting silly, it, it becomes really unproductive. And so I think they wanted to move it earlier, to get done earlier. That being said, once they made that decision, they wanted all the other committees, boards, commissions to move their meetings earlier for the uniformity sake, for, so people aren't confused, which, you know, okay, is this a 6:30, a 7, a 7:30, you know, board? That way, everyone knows, if they're coming to a meeting, they're all starting at 6:30. I think that was my understanding of why this is being asked.
Actually, EAC meets at 6:00.
Actually, I think if people want to come to a meeting, they'll figure out what time it is. So I, I don't, I don't think we can blame it on the public for that one.
So can we decline?
Yes, this is your, this is, your meeting, you can meet when you want.
Fine, then let's make a motion to move the meeting to 6:30.
Anybody want to decline?
Okay, I'll move it.
I'll move the, move the meeting to 6:30.
I thought you just said we were going to decline.
We're gonna decline.
Withdraw your...
I move that we decline the request to move the meeting to 6:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, meeting's still at 7 o'clock. Another piece of business I have, as a, as a board, I'd, I'd like to stop the late meetings, and I'd like to become extremely efficient with what we do, and I feel like our, our value and what we're supposed to be doing is, we're supposed to be focused on planning and good planning. We're also supposed to be focused on trying to make sure things are done properly, obviously, and the public's heard, and the applicants are heard, and run a meeting, and also to, you know, maybe there are items that, you know, by law, we can't request, but they're good planning items, so we suggest, you know, good planning items, and like, hey, can't you do it this way, can't you do it, that kind of a thing. What I don't think we're tasked to do is to get involved in all the details and the minutia, and get involved with the black and white issues, which are the legal issues and the code issues. Now, I think we should bring them up, because that's, I think, part of our review process, but I think 99, 9% of the time, we have to rely on staff to give us that expertise. So what I would like to suggest is a means of trying to run a more efficient meeting and get out of here on time, is try and get that stuff done ahead of time. So to the point that, you know, once we get the plans, let's try and have our review done, our personal review done, if the meeting's Monday, maybe, I don't know when we get this stuff, but let's, if we, if we get our personal review done on a Wednesday, Thursday, then if we have technical issues for staff, staff has already agreed, they're all very happy to receive emails from us, and to answer those emails, so let's get them to them by, like, say, a Wednesday or a Thursday, that we can have email exchanges, get all those questions resolved, or points brought up, and so we don't have to bring them up to the meeting. Because I'd like, all that will comply stuff should be out of the meeting. They'll comply, or they won't comply, if they won't comply, then we need to hear it. So anyway, that's just, that's just a request.
Steve, I, I agree with, largely with things that you said. The caveat that I have is, or the, or the corollary to that is, part of the reason we've had some late meetings, and actually, I think this is pretty good, is that we've had big plans and a lot of developments. So that would underscore the need to be efficient. But the other thing that happens, we listen to a lot of long applicant presentations. And I'm just gonna put it out there, tonight's presentation from Biomed was way too long, you know, and too much fluff, and if, I appreciate that you want to drill down and get to, what are the outstanding issues, will an applicant comply, not comply, let's hear the public, and do we have conversation to have, or discussion about, you know, a point and how we feel about it? That's the valid conversation. A 20-minute conversation with the, and when the applicant gets up, and there are a couple of applicants who are pretty common to do this, they hear something they don't like, and they jump up and want to respond to everything. It's not, it's not court, it's not rebuttal, it's not debate time. So if we're going to be rigorous, rigorous with ourselves with regard to preparing for a meeting, and I feel I'm pretty rigorous, so I'm okay on that one, and I think if we're gonna be rigorous about listening to the public, and there are ways to do that and incorporate it, then we also need to be rigorous with the applicants and not listen to really long, largely marketing presentations.
My only comment to that, Susan, is that I think a first time...
Sure.
I mean, Biomed, this is like the eighth time.
Exactly.
But a first-time presentation...
Sure.
They maybe should get a little slack.
Yeah, right.
And the second comment to Steve's remarks, I think to do that code hunt, so to speak, in advance, you need one full week at least, and sometimes we don't get the full week.
If I may add to that quickly, typically, the, the plans, when they come in, are, are submitted at around 30 days prior to your next meeting, and those, those plans, I often defer to Steve and Susan, but they're usually pretty quickly put up onto the township's website. So the, the plans are usually available much longer before you actually get them in your packet, which is delivered a week before the meeting. So those plans typically are available.
I have a 17-inch laptop, and this is a lot better.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm old school, I like my papers, but, you know...
To, to the extent, since we're all, we're gonna benefit from this, to the extent that it's possible for staff to get us this stuff, you know, 10 days ahead of time or something, if it's possible, if it's not, it's not.
We can, we can distribute the plans, and I don't want to speak for Steve here, but we can distribute the plans when they come in. They typically sit over here in a box until all of our review letters are assembled, and then they're all sent to you, complete with the review letters. So we could, we could get the plans to you ahead of time. Now, we certainly don't expect you to sit down and do the full-blown code review on these, but we can, we can get the plan to you, you can start reviewing the plan, and then follow up with our review letters when they're complete.
Yeah, and to the extent you can, again, get them 10 days. Look, I appreciate you have other work to do, so if you can't, you can't, but the more in advance we can get them, the better we can...
The one thing, so when the plans come in, Sue accepts them, Roger or his firm makes sure they're administratively complete. Once that occurs, the quick and easy is, we can always shoot out an email very early, and just tell us what you want, how you want the plans. Like I said, we've been waiting until the review letters are complete to try to give you the whole package. There was a set of plans, I know Sue had talked to the board, and we had distributed the plans long before the review letters, I believe that was our dross, and again, based on its sheer size. So whatever this commission wants, you give us something definitive, and if we can meet it, we will definitely do that.
Actually, I, I don't think the plans without the review letters are much good.
No, I agree, I mean, it's 10 days, and, we, a week before the, well, a week, but then we want to, we want to get comments to them by, in writing by Wednesday.
And we can't always drop everything in our lives, too.
One of the issues, if I may add, to the, to the 10 days, and we will certainly try as, as best we can to get this done, but like I said, an applicant can walk in here and drop their plans off on a Friday afternoon, and the clock starts if they beat the 30-day clock to get put onto the next meeting, and with a 10-day review period, we may only have the better part of a week plus, because we have internal staff meetings to discuss these plans when we're doing our reviews also, before the letters are issued typically. So it really compresses the review time, and if you get something that's more than a small four or five-sheet plan, it, it really makes it difficult to turn that around in that time.
I appreciate that, and I, and that's fine, so maybe we'll just do this with the ones that come in early, and if somebody comes in late, then we're not, we're just gonna have to table them, you know, because they're, they're a new one anyway.
Do you, I have two questions. One is, when you see a plan, there are red flags and yellow flags. The yellow flags are, the fire hydrant isn't in the right spot. A red flag is, the setbacks are wrong. Can you do a, would it be possible to do an earlier red flag summary with an earlier plan? Like, these are the big issues. I mean, there's some, how do, I don't know how you'd approach it, I mean, if you go like...
We approach it by going through every item of the code, and going through the code and, and checking those off on the plan. So, I mean, I can look at, I can look at that and see if, if there's some way to efficiently do that. The issue there may end up being you have two separate and distinct review letters floating around, and I don't want anything to get confusing for everyone, and certainly for an applicant, you know, I don't want confusion and then have them not address a whole bunch of items and come before you with a, with really a plan that shouldn't be here.
Can I suggest this, and does, does anybody mind getting the review letters via email?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we, we get them by email, but I'd rather have them printed, because...
These letters?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I was just thinking that would cut down the time, give you more time to review.
If you want to eat them out to me, that's fine.
Online, emails, many times, not every time. I know, if you could print them out. No, I know. And I, I... Just, we'll just keep the system the way it is, and just get them to as early as possible.
I think one, one of the reasons why we felt so overwhelmed this past year and a half or two, is that we had so many huge plans that would make a major impact on the township, and two of them in particular were just horrible. You know, I mean, the impact, it required so much, they were asking for so many variances, and I don't need to name who they are, you know.
No, that, that's fine.
But I think when you're under that sort of pressure, that no matter what you say, it doesn't matter, because they're gonna get it anyway, you know, and it's frustrating. But I think with the smaller plans, like the Stratford ones, that's not an issue, it's not hard to go through them. But the ones that are like 60 pages long...
No, I, I, I know.
Something this size that you get is review letters.
Yeah. Susan?
Yep, new business. So, I welcome to hear from staff, what do we need to do as a, as a planning commission if this is really a gaping hole in our zoning to get it rectified, the, the lot calculation? What needs to happen?
There are a variety of issues that we, we deal with on a day-to-day basis, that are just really frustrating the staff to deal with, not only for the land development side, but the normal grading and zoning permits for somebody to come in with a shed. What we're going to do, Peter and I are gonna kind of sit down and look at these issues, develop a list of, instead of, you know, if, if we could, we would tackle the entire ordinance, that's probably not manageable in a reasonable timeframe, so we're gonna kind of try to put together a list of these big issues that come back every day or every week, and then try to prioritize those, and then I'm gonna make a presentation to the board and petition the board to see if we can start tackling some of these things in a more meaningful manner, and not these onesies and twosies that we've been doing, but, you know, maybe an ordinance that addresses six or seven of these, and then deal with the next chunk, to try to, to really address these issues in a more permanent manner. these issues in a more permanent manner. Because the ones that you dealt with tonight are just a handful of the ones that we deal with on a daily basis. And it's very frustrating, you know, looking at the zoning code and trying to figure out, okay, well, in this situation, it could be interpreted this way, and that's the way I would interpret it. But then Peter and John may have different experience and interpret it in a slightly different manner. So we're trying to tie up those loose ends, and we're going to be working over the next month or two to develop that list. And I'm sure at some point, it's going to come in front of you, that list as well.
I appreciate that, Kevin. So, and it doesn't need to be a long discussion tonight. That is one thing that has kind of fallen off the radar in the last year and a half or so, you know, closely correlated with all the big development plans we've had, because there was a period of time where we were doing some ordinance work here as part of our work as planning commission members, and it makes complete sense, it fell off of, you know, the work task list as these other development plans have come in. But, you know, the, it's important that we get back on it, and I know it's going to take something, but in the long run, that is the biggest difference we can make with regard to planning for the township, is if we can take a look at, like, I know that the change was made to the parking. It was a simple change, and it, in the calculation for parking spaces, but it will make a difference for the township for a long time.
Well, we were working on institutional, too, before Villanetta came in.
I realize that, and it all got backburnered. My point of, that's great, and I'm, you know, don't want to forget that we want to keep that piece moving forward, too, because long-term, that's going to make a big difference for the township. So thanks.
And there was one other one. There was a committee several years ago, in fact, Baron, you were on it. We rewrote the billboard ordinance, and came up with what we considered a pretty strong ordinance, was never presented. And this was when the billboards were hot in the main line, when Mr. Big was coming in with his billboards and putting, there was litigation in Lower Marion Township and Haverford Township, and Truduff, and I believe. So we were trying to be preemptive and put an ordinance in that was stronger than what we had, to address problems that other people had, other townships had. And I don't know where that ordinance is for, at this point, but that was written, and it just never got, went to anybody to be reviewed.
Yep. We also did an alternative energy ordinance, you know, the solar, wind, and geothermal. We worked on that, and that disappeared, too.
Yeah, I know that some of these that you're discussing, John actually has drafts ready to go. We, you know, looking at a noise ordinance right now to address that, bring that out of zoning, and do that in a little bit more of a measurable way, so that there are some actually standards behind that for enforcement. So some of these, and I thought that the billboard ordinance was done, from my understanding with dealing with an applicant that had come in previously and talking with John Rice about that, I can look into those, but some of these, they are, they're there, they're just, we're trying to prioritize which ones we really start to tackle and dive into.
Kevin, could you maybe just give us an update on where all these outstanding projects are, and from a process standpoint and priority and completion standpoint, maybe next time?
Well, which ones? Because there are so many that...
Well, I, yeah, well, all of them. If it's not asking too much, I mean, it seems there's some board members that are concerned about various ones, and I guess we'd like to understand what the township's priorities are and...
Sure. What I can do is find out from John which ordinances that are already in draft format, and let you know where we're at with those. And then if it's not on the draft format list, then it hasn't been addressed yet.
That's fine, just so we kind of understand and set our expectations. Skip.
I have one more housekeeping thing. I noticed tonight we are doing 120 Bloomingdale, and the Delaware County Review is promised March 16th, and here we are, you know, working on things. Is there any way to expedite Delaware County reviews? I mean, when do you, when you, somebody drops in a plan on Friday, when do you ask Delaware County to review it? Who makes the preliminary decision?
Typically on Monday or Tuesday. Once I determine that the plan as submitted is administratively complete, I sign that application, and it's forwarded to the county.
Just kind of stuck with the process at the county level? That's why we couldn't have it earlier.
I don't know. We'd have to discuss that with the county.
I could ask Kevin.
I just sign the application and send it along like I'm supposed to.
They usually get to them fairly quickly, unless they're overwhelmed, and I don't think they have been lately. But I know they reviewed some stuff on the planning commission before I had even seen it on this board yet. But maybe they were late getting this plan in.
Interestingly, I read in our code book today that Board of Commissioners and the Planning Commission were actually not supposed to recommend approval or denial, or approve or deny a plan without having seen that, the Delaware County comments. It's in our zoning. I sat reading our book today. Unless 30 days have passed. But you're saying that the timing at the county is a lot, is not...
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
If there's no new business, then I move re-join.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?